Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for March 8th, 2001. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Yeah, yeah.
Ann Mayer?
Here.
Harold Chelman?
Finally here.
Rebecca Remison?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Yeah.
Dexter Legg?
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Shulman?
Here.
Tom Mont?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Clay Haywood?
Here.
Linda Brulette?
Here.
Dana Fadaro?
Here.
Very good. If you'll join me for a moment of silence and then we'll...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, you know, as we have a moment of silence, if we could just keep the family of Jeffrey Brown in our thoughts. Sherri, her two boys, Alec and Riley. Jeffrey died last week, and Sherri is part of the school community over at New Franklin that are also, you know, close friends and my immediate neighbor.
Oh, okay, sure. Thank you. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes from February 22nd.
So moved.
Second. Any conversation or discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Well, let's see. Public commentary session, there's nobody who signed up, but I'll offer it if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak. You're more than welcome to step up. Seeing no takers, okay? Thank you. We'll move on, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent. We'll do some special presentations.
Since last August, a subgroup of the district's Wellness Committee has been working to introduce the concept of 5210, which is an educational campaign message. We've been working to kind of communicate that message to children in grades K to 8, as well as their families. And so this evening, as we start the presentation, I'd like to recognize the work of our school nurses. They're with us this evening. Cindy Hart, Kathy Casperson, Lisa Caccidi, and Barbara Pambukas. I'd also like to recognize the work of our PE and health teacher, Kathy Bear Siegel, our nutrition director, Pat Lasker, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Zadrevic, as well as some parent help, Beth Hartnett, who's not with us this evening, as well as help from Kim Truesdale, who's a former PHS graduate and has been very helpful with our work. And I'd also, of course, like to thank our teachers, principals, and students for participating in this endeavor. Our goal at the outset was essentially to basically communicate this message of 5210 in our classrooms, and hopefully, to some extent, in our students' homes, so that we might have a positive impact on students' health and well-being. Simply stated, 5210 is a statewide education campaign designed to bring awareness on a daily basis of simple guidelines for nutrition and physical activity. The message is simple and clear. Students are to eat at least five fruits or vegetables on a daily basis. More matters. We ask that they work, and in some cases, this isn't much work, but in other cases it is, to cut screen time to no more than two hours per day. We encourage students to be physically active and participate at least one hour in moderate to vigorous physical activity on a daily basis. And then we ask them to avoid sugary drinks of any nature, be they sports drinks, soda, et cetera. So what is 5210? It's a campaign that we wanted to communicate throughout the district. We began in October by inviting a pediatrician down, Dr. Victoria Rogers, who's been instrumental throughout the New England states in bringing this campaign forward. We had some general awareness in December, and then when the new year arrived, we've been spending one week a month in terms of letting children actually practice, engage in each of these singular activities. In the month of January, they were focused on just five fruits or vegetables. They track that on a weekly basis. In February, we've talked about limiting screen time, and we tried to coordinate a little bit with Read Across America. This coming month, it'll be physical activity, and our PE teachers will be engaged in promoting that. And then in April, hopefully, an accent on avoiding sugary drinks, and then try to pull it all together in May. And so I'd like to turn this over now quickly to Cindy Hart, who's our nurse at Dondaro.
I want to continue with the presentation from Mr. McDonough. We've continued with the 5210 in terms of looking at issues with children in the 32.8% of New Hampshire children ages 6 to 12 years of age were listed as obese or overweight, according to the 2006 New Hampshire Childhood Obesity Report. Over 24% of New Hampshire high school students are overweight or obese, according to a CDC report. So we've continued to try and provide information to parents through handouts and really encouraging the 5210 and working with the kids. It's a cartoon, eat less and exercise more. That's the most ridiculous fad diet I've heard of yet. And 5210 in the schools in Portsmouth. It's a foundation of healthy habits for students, help play a vital role in academic success. Even a non-scientific survey of Portsmouth classrooms echoes the statewide statistics. And we can incorporate an emphasis on healthy habits into the school day at low cost. I think the teachers, many of them were really gung ho with the five component, really working on healthy snacks in the classroom and encouraging children, as well as themselves. And I think I've continued to see that with some of the snacks that are coming to school in terms of apples and oranges and grapes, and really encouraging more healthy items there. Now, turn this over to Barbara Pambukas for a few of the next slides.
Good evening. Some of the events that we started out with, as Mr. McDonough mentioned, was Dr. Victoria Rogers. She is a national speaker. She has started this program in Maine, and we were very fortunate to have her come down and do a presentation for our community, our staff, and families. Next, we went to a suggestion box program. You see on the bottom right, that was a wonderful opportunity to find out what the kids are thinking. For each program, we did a little survey of the children. They sent us information back, say, "What are your favorite fruits and vegetables?" And they did drawings, they did stories, they gave us recipes. We put them in the boxes, and then the kids at our school did a little prize every cafeteria, every meal. And we did that for about a week. It was wonderful. The other thing that we did, we did a pilot story walk at New Franklin, and I believe that we're going to do the same thing in spring at all the elementary schools. A story walk is going around an area of our school. It turned out it was probably about a mile walk, and we took a storybook on Thanksgiving, and the children went from page to page, and it was very sweet. The older children had book buddies, so we teamed the kindergarten with fifth grade. They would go to each point, read the story, and then they're supposed to walk to the next point. But the kids were just running, and it was a wonderful experience for them. And go. And thank you. Our success stories, of course, were the suggestion box, and this is a drawing from Dondaro with one of the healthy drawings. The goal tracker, the first couple were very successful. The second one on media, we had to work on. But I think that this is going to be something that will probably have some successes when we do this next year. And that's what a goal tracker looks like. I would have loved to give all of you one, and if anyone would like one, I'd be glad to send that to you on physical exercise this month, that we're all trying to get one hour of exercise in every day. Have we done that today? No. You have one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Over at the middle school, we sort of piloted the 5210 prior to Mr. McDonough even coming into our school system, and we hopped right in this year. We have taken a little bit of a different track from the elementary, just because our kids are at a different developmental level. I want to say in the beginning, when Pat Laska came and gave a nutrition talk to my sixth graders, we asked them what 5210 was, and we only had one kid that knew because it was Beth Hartnett's daughter. And we were like, how did she know that? But if you went through our middle school now and asked the kids, everybody knows what it is. We have integrated it through our advisory program. On Friday mornings, we have a reading about once every other month, and we have a variety of different activities.
I think we started the year with the five and did kiwi tasting with the help of Pat Laska on a Friday morning during homeroom, and the kids absolutely love that. They want to have fruit every Friday. And we've tried to incentivize participation for the homeroom that participates, has the highest percentage of participation, stuff like that, because the kids love to win at that age. We also have grabbed from the teachers, you know, to start to have them sort of think about, you know, what do they do for physical activity with kids, and to sort of kind of collect our data a little better than we did last year. So far this year, then we've walked over 2,000 miles as a school. What years ago, we used to take a bus at the whole school to the high school for a play. Now the whole school walks. We'll do a walk at the end of the year as well. Kathy was part of the whole eighth grade that climbed Mount Major that you talked about.
And it was incorporated not only as a physical activity, but also as a science project, and they had tracker sheets that they had to find out, different plant formations, different weather conditions, and then they also had to track, they had, each group had a pedometer. They tracked their steps. So we kind of incorporated a lot of different modalities of education into that one activity. We really want to incorporate the 5210 into our whole school culture, and I think we're really on the right track, because we've got all the advisory teachers jumping on board. They look for our articles, they look for our activities. The sugar challenge is what we had last month. We worked, have a health committee at the middle school that put together, the display is right over here, the kids, and you saw the pictures, the kids came down and got to figure out how many grams of sugar were in the different drinks that are offered at the cafeteria. And prizes were awarded for the homeroom that had the most participation and for the homeroom that had the most correct answers. So we went both ends on that.
A lot of them were wrong, because they all thought milk had the least.
And it was actually G2.
It was actually G2, yeah.
So we definitely think that the 5210 message is very prominent in the middle school. This is not our next steps, but I'll tell you our next steps. We have a screen time activity planned. It's going to be student-generated survey through the student council, and we're going to have the whole school create different ways that Portsmouth Middle School could spend their time not being on the screens, whether it be texting, whether it be computer, whether it be phone, or whatever. And that's going to happen in April, and then, as Kathy mentioned before, in June, we have an advisory. It's the last Monday in June that we're in school, which kind of got pushed over another week, thanks to the snow. But the entire school goes out and walks, and it's really kind of a neat thing, because you can stand up on the hill by the tennis courts, and you can just see all these homerooms in their groups of 10 to 13, walking all over. And this year, we're going to track them and see how far we can get across the state of New Hampshire. Maybe we'll even get into Vermont or Massachusetts, depending on where we're going to go. But it's just really awesome opportunity, and Mr. Stokel has been very supportive of us.
Thank you. So in short, it's been a first foray in. It's far from perfect. I think a couple of the concerns raised about challenges is it's really essential to have teachers on board, and yet we wanted to be very respectful of teacher time. When I went out in the fall and I asked them if they'd help, I said I wanted them to help with the five component, and that went wonderfully. We really have tried to work with the librarians around the two piece. Our PE teachers are really going to assist us with the one coming up. And so I think over time, you know, we'll improve upon this, and it'll kind of be embedded in our culture. But I thank everybody who's been part of this process. I had hoped to end with, there's a little link of the story walk that took place on Thanksgiving Day. It's 34 slides set to music that's really wonderful, but because it's an on wireless link, it really kind of breaks out, and it's not worth your time this evening. But what I will do is send that as a link to you via email, so you can take a look at that. It's only about three minutes long, but I think it's a very powerful statement to children reading, being physically engaged and active, running around, you know, partnering together. I mean, it moves me. Let's just say that, okay? So we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions? Leslie, yes.
How is this being incorporated at the high school?
Well, that's a challenge, that's one of the things the committee talked about for next year, is how will we reach out and do this K-12? We really wanted to focus narrowly, so we can control it and not take too big a step. But that's something we're thinking about. How do we move this forward next year to the high school? And so we're still having conversations about that. Leslie.
Clay?
I have a question. How does this work with students that have type 2 diabetes?
I'll defer to the nurses here.
I have two students, a couple of students at Dondaro that have diabetes, and it works well with them in terms of snack planning and activity. And we just work it into their day, in terms of their meal planning, their scheduling, and it's just really important for them to be having healthy snacks as well. So the apples, the grapes, the bananas, whatever they bring, and then in terms of the activity.
Probably easier for them, because that's what they eat anyway. The rest of them...
Okay, thank you.
And we've got some displays, you know, some of the visuals that we've used for the students. We've had bulletin boards and handouts going home and so forth. And thanks to Pat, we had fruits and things for the students that didn't bring fruits to school on some of those days. That week, we had that really real push, and they were coming all down to get apples and oranges and whatever we had. Thank you.
Tom?
Has there been any thought of connecting this with Safe Roots to Schools? You know, because part of the program that you're talking about is really making better choices, and instead of necessarily carving out specific time to be active, but trying to incorporate being active as part of your daily routine. So kids walk and bike and scooter to school, and if we take a look at challenges or just programs that we're going to start to look at doing, even at the high school level, that's something that could easily be woven in.
One of the things that happens at these monthly meetings is there's a lot of synergies that can take place and opportunities to connect. So, I mean, we do want to do that. We haven't yet, candidly, but it's an opportunity.
Okay.
I think some of them have already been incorporated in, what you're talking about, because your trackers, when your kids are going to walk this next month or week, they're going to do that. If they walk or bike to school, they can put that on their tracker sheets.
Oh, great.
When the middle school comes in and does their activities for science, they go up to the cemetery, they're tracking that, as well as with, sometimes they'll come in and get pedometers, sometimes they'll just track it by an estimated distance. So a lot of it has been incorporated already in curriculum, activities that are going on. And we also send a letter home through the middle school newsletter every term, giving them an update on what we've done in the 5210 area as well. So all parents would get that as well.
Great. Hey, thank you.
Carol, then Kent?
Just to follow up on the comment about Safe Roots to Schools, there's also, I think, a Walk America or some sort of walk program that we did a couple of years ago, and it was part of Safe Roots to Schools. And I know Beth Hartnett knows about it. That would be a great program to bring back and integrate with all of this, and it's...
National Walk to School Day in October?
Something like that, but Beth Hartnett knows all about it, and you get free T-shirts and it's a nice program.
Yes, I'd like to speak to that. That's Walk New Hampshire, and that is something that we do yearly, and also the safe, what's it called? The, no, the Step It Up Seacoast. So all those things are being done, and it's part of our plan, but it wasn't part of what we were talking about today. But you'll see the messages about Walk New Hampshire soon.
Good. Great. Thank you.
Kent?
Back to Kathy. Just Kathy, what's the percentage at the middle school of students that participate, both in like marching band and athletics? Do you know? Do you have an idea?
I don't know that offhand, but I do know, like, in our challenges, like our sugar challenge, 50% participated in our walks to the school. We had 100%, you know, I mean, every kid walked up there, except for the few that had physical disabilities that couldn't. Our walk, eighth grade walk, hike up Mount Major, every eighth grader, not everybody made it to the top, but everybody attempted and did, we had a few that only went halfway, but everybody participated in some way, shape, or form. And we also aligned trails to meet the kids' needs. You know, we have some high-energy kids, athletes and everything, that we gave them more difficult trails, and then some of the kids that we knew it was going to be a challenge for, we gave them a flatter trail to go up to the mountain, and it all converged at the top, and it was really kind of neat, because they all made it.
It wasn't a school board trail where, you know, it's real...
No.
But Kathy, just following up on that, at the middle school, is there a way to start to do a measure and accountability of the, that's why I ask, how many students might...
I think Matt Mitchell would have all that data, because he's the athletic director.
I was looking at it for one season, like, it's in the, for some reason, I want to say it was between 24 and 26% for sports, but it wasn't with music, because for the most part, the music programs in the middle school, they're not like out marching. Are you just thinking...
No, just what physical, you know, activities? I look at number one.
All right, because the music program, and they really only do that one thing up, it goes over to Prescott Park Memorial Day, and the parades. So I don't, I think they would, the music department would have a direct number on how many participate. But athletics, I would agree with Kathy. I didn't want to give you a figure, because I wasn't exactly sure, but Matt Mitchell would have all the information, because he's the athletic director, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Seeing no more questions? Thank you, thank you all very much for coming out and for the effort. 5210. Okay, so we'll wait for the superintendent to come back.
Mr. Chairman, could I request that we move an item up? Item 10B regarding the sabbatical proposal. Could we move that up from the agenda?
Helene Wimpel is here, I guess, and...
That's a motion.
Okay, so it's a motion, second?
Second.
Any discussions, any problems? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Zadrevic?
Sure. Just, we have a sabbatical proposal that we are presenting to you tonight for approval. The proposal was designed by Helene Wimpel, one of our world language teachers at Portsmouth High School. And I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the process for approving these, and a quick overview of Helene's proposal. She's here to answer any of your questions for sure, and I think, believe, Mr. McDonough will talk a little bit about the funding, how that will happen. So just quickly, the sabbatical process is something defined in the teacher's contract, but I would say over the last five years, we've really shifted what the focus of a sabbatical is in the district. And I think in your packet, you have the actual rubric that was used and that is used and has been used to evaluate proposals on a certain set of parameters. And in general terms, the shift, I believe, has been from looking at a sabbatical from the sole perspective of the benefit to the individual who is taking a sabbatical, to viewing sabbaticals as what can be a mutual benefit to the individual, as well as the students, as well as the district, as well as the community. And I believe the last few sabbaticals that have come before you have demonstrated that. You approved Doreen George's sabbatical, which was focused also from a high school teacher's perspective, but on helping elementary teachers in the area of science. Most recently, you approved Joy Bryan's sabbatical, a teacher at New Franklin who worked to develop an enrichment program and strategies to meet students' needs around math and additional challenge. Those things are both things that still sustain today. In fact, at each of our elementary schools, we still have an after-school enrichment program around math that is actually just getting its steam underneath it this year and is looking to be very successful still. So what happens with a sabbatical proposal is the individual will submit the proposal. It is reviewed by a team sabbatical committee. Ms. Brulette is in fact on that committee, was on the committee this year, and we have teacher representatives, as well as some administrative representatives, and review the sabbatical in holding it up against the defined rubric. That committee makes a recommendation to approve it or not, and that recommendation goes to the superintendent, who then makes a decision as to whether or not to bring it forward to you. So that process has happened, given this proposal, and Mr. McDonough is bringing it to you this evening. Just as a quick overview of her proposal, this proposal, and I won't go through it all, and I hope you got a chance to take a look at it. One of the things that is a clear focus in this proposal is on looking at building some additional capacity around not just world language, but really culture, cultural awareness, and what's described here as global citizenship. And it's really a sort of a multi-pronged approach to that. That includes professional development for teachers, and that would be a true experiential trip to Costa Rica that Ms. Wimpel has taken many times, has taken students on many times, including home stays and community service work there. And that professional development, professional learning would be combined with the teacher's reflection in terms of their own classroom, their own instruction. And you can see that there are a number of different elements to that, that include increased activities at the elementary level, involvement with teachers, as well as with high school students into the elementary schools, as well as additional events at the high school, World Culture Day. And so you can see that what really, I think, this proposal represents is a broadening of the effort around a sort of a K-12 awareness of the importance of global citizenship of world cultures and world language. So you'll see also in there a plan to sustain the work beyond what the sabbatical itself is, and you can see that, again, that has to do with not just the professional development of teachers, but also the involvement of students and looking at some of the involvement with the elementary schools. One of the interesting pieces of this that I think actually holds some potential merit in other cases is a growing partnership with higher education, looking at developing some partnership there that may lead to some other benefits in other areas. But in this case, there's a particular effort to bring in the Plymouth State Writing Project and looking at some ways to incorporate a higher ed component into the sabbatical itself. And so, and I think, as she says in the plan to sustain, that the program would ideally have a snowball effect, that is to say, to get as many teachers involved as possible, to raise that awareness and to sort of lay the groundwork for a continued approach around world language. And on the front end, one of the things that Helene is proposing to do is to take a clearer audit, if you will, of exactly what's happening, not just within the schools of Portsmouth, but also in the sending schools in SAU 50. And to, we know that the experiences for students are different in all of those different districts and ours, but what this sabbatical would give us a chance to do also is to sort of move that conversation a little forward, again, to look at, what could we create that would help be a better blend for students and their experiences? I would point out, and I think Mr. McDonough will pick up on this, this sabbatical is timed a little differently than others that have come before you, whereas a teacher would typically take a sabbatical for a year or a half year. This is a half-year proposal, but it's across the two different quarters. That is the end quarter of one year and the beginning quarter of the next. And that... And that's intentional to sort of put bookends on that summer professional development experience with teachers. So that has certain implications that I believe I'll turn over to Mr. McDonough.
Yeah, so under the collective bargaining agreement in Article 39, you know, a sabbatical is available to a teacher who's had at least five consecutive years of teaching in the district, and if approved by this board, then they would commit to a two-year stay upon completion of their sabbatical here in the district. They have a choice to take half-pay full year, or they can take full pay with benefits for a half-year sabbatical leave. And so the recommendation came out of the committee on the rubric and was highly supportive. I had the opportunity to meet with Helene and go over her proposal, and we talked because of budget constraints, quite frankly, by teacher contract, you are to provide in your budget for three sabbaticals on an annual basis. And, you know, in light of where we are financially, we talked about ways to mitigate that, and of course, as Mr. Zadriek said, she's willing to do this stretch doing at Quarter Four in FY12, and then Quarter One in the next fiscal year. And so the way Helene's schedule typically works, I talked with Principal Collins, she teaches AP. She then does some foreign language, world language, as well as a geography class at the freshman level. And so she can complete that full commitment to the AP classwork, and then we would be needing to find a substitute for the 45 days of Quarter Four. So the economic impact of granting the sabbatical in FY12 is essentially $8,550 to have a substitute and be able to let her enjoy this benefit. So I know Helene is here to answer any questions you might have directly about it, and I would recommend the board approve the sabbatical the next school year.
Okay, questions? Yes, we'll start with Rebecca.
I just want to say, I think this is wonderful. I really appreciate how you've looked at SAU 50 and 52 and the disparity between languages. I think by not offering, in particular, Spanish at the elementary level, I think we're doing a huge disservice to our students. I have a, to be fair, a vested interest. I have family who lives in central Mexico, and so I'm very partial to Spanish. And I was just there, and my two-year-old nephew already knows more English than I do Spanish, and it's just part of the culture. And he's going to grow up bilingual. His brain is going to grow in a different way. And I love how you're looking into bringing it into the elementary school. And I would love to see an immersion class, you know, that someone could opt in to learn everything in a certain language. So I wholeheartedly support this, and I'm very excited to see this.
Any other questions?
I especially like the aspect of global citizenship. I love that phrase. And along with the language and the culture, the aspect of geography, our kids really don't know where anything is in the world. And I think your statistics are showing how many had not been out of the country. Even some who have are not too sure where that is. So I'm delighted to see that whole tie-in. It sounds wonderful, and I do support this.
Any other questions?
No questions, just a comment. I think this is a very creative way to put together something that is very beneficial. I mean, I like the fact that, you know, there's some world citizenship component to it, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to vote on this. This is great.
So I just have a couple of quick questions. So I'm just curious, so this is going to be a team of teachers.
Hi.
So the idea would be, you would put for the professional development trip part, you would put together a team of teachers, or teachers would volunteer to participate and travel with you?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, ideally, I would open it up to anyone in SAU 50 or 52, anyone who would be interested. It's really, like Mr. Zadriek said, it really has a snowball effect. So the idea is to start it with people who really are excited about it and interested in it, and say there's, say, 15 teachers in the first group, and it would be anyone K through 12 in SAU 50 or 52 who would like to do this 10-day Costa Rica experience. As part of the experience, they would actually work with their corresponding teacher in Costa Rica. The advantage of Costa Rica is that they have school during our summertime, so they're in session. It would be a 10-day trip in August, where, say, a fourth-grade teacher here would actually be in the fourth-grade classroom there. A high school science teacher here would be in the high school science classroom there. So whoever is willing to do that, basically, they would additionally have Spanish classes there, and then a big piece of it would those teachers, say, 12, would form a group and write basically lesson plans on how they would bring that experience back to their classroom. So if they are a high school biology teacher, how are you going to incorporate Spanish into your classroom? How will you incorporate global awareness into that curriculum? If you're a first-grade teacher and you did the experience, how are you going to bring your experience back into your classroom? So that's the idea, is to start it, and then from there, ideally, that group would start, would create its own PLC, and that PLC would then be able to broaden it out into the other schools where there may be less interest, or where other people want to bring it in but didn't have the opportunity to go on a trip. And that ideally would snowball into other ideas, and who knows, other things that would happen.
And so, and what's the cost of this to an individual?
The trip cost is about $1,800.
And I'm just curious, and what's the relationship between this trip and this Live the OSA?
Oh, Live the OSA is actually my own program. I have an LLC called Live the OSA right now. It's a business that I started last year, and the soul, the business started because basically after doing six trips through Portsmouth High School, I had several students who are now in college call me up and say, I want to go back to Costa Rica. I want to do that again. I want to visit my host family. I want to spend more time down there. Can you set it up for me? And so I was setting that up for PHS graduates who are now in college and really, and basically organizing it for them, and I set up, I just made it an LLC for liability reasons, to separate myself from the business for any reason, and not for any profit by any means. And so that's what the LLC is, is basically my business that does not now. So I would do it through the name of the business for the same reasons of liability and keeping it separate from the school.
And you already have existing relationships with teachers down there so that you feel comfortable, you could pretty much match?
Yeah. The town that we go to, I actually just got back on Sunday with a group of 14 high school students, and it was a great trip. Hopefully, we can come to the next board meeting and present the trip, because it was excellent. And like I said, this was our sixth trip down to Costa Rica with Portsmouth High School. But I lived in that town for three years. I've lived in Costa Rica for a total of 10 years, and that specific town for three years. And I've always worked with different schools, bringing students down there, and so we have host families and the high school I'm very connected with. I'm good friends with the superintendent of the schools there. I know the principals very well. We go into the schools actually with the students. They did, they went to the high school and the elementary school this past trip, so I have a lot of connections in town.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Second. So any further discussion on this? We'll take it as a roll call vote, since there's money involved.
Governor, gentlemen?
Yes.
Rebecca Remison?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Schulman?
Yes.
Paul Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Hayward?
Yes.
Bon voyage.
Thank you.
Okay, back on track. Superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, in your materials, I've included an application and information about New Hampshire School Board Association's scholarship. It's something that's in the five regions of the state, so the southeastern region of which Portsmouth is a member. There's a $1,000 scholarship annually that are available to children of school board members. I know that might be appropriate this year and next year and some others, so I just bring that to your attention. Included an article that captures the results of a nationwide survey of school board members, which talks about a shift in priorities for school boards, more focused since 2002 on student achievement. There's also a more detailed article actually in the School Board Journal, which I hope you are all receiving at your homes, and so you can go and read that in much more detail. There is a notice to the board of an overnight trip that's been scheduled by Portsmouth High School's Outing Club in late May, as well as a copy of the local scholarship booklet for 2010-11 that's been provided by the high school guidance office. Ms. Noble did compile a list of topics you generated at the last workshop session for consideration to present to the charter commission, and so that will be coming up at a subsequent school board workshop. And you also have a letter from community members who are expressing concern about the youth recreation center, particularly about the process. So that's really the sum total of the superintendent's report this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Seeing none? Thank you. And we'll move on to district reports.
Yes, and we'll begin with our dean, Principal Shea.
He's the dean?
Yes, he's the elder statesman of the elementary school.
The elder sta, that's scary.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for that dignified moniker you've given me. I appreciate it. Thank you for having us out tonight. Welcome back, everybody. Just some general school highlights at New Franklin, recent events. We had our community ice cream social in February, family math games night at Gosling Meadows, which is an event we look forward to every year. Also, just before break, we decided to celebrate Read Across America Day a little differently. We had a great vacation book swap, where everyone brought in, whole school brought in gently-used books, all those things from people's closets, attic's books they had outgrown. We put them all on tables, and everyone in the community got to come in and grab some books for their vacation reading. So hopefully, we had some eyes on fresh text over the week, and everyone got some good reads. Just wanted to say, we're especially proud of our Grade Five basketball teams. The New Franklin girls were the elementary league champions, and the boys were runner-up. Throughout the year, they really just showed great sportsmanship, great modeling for our younger students, and really, we were proud of all that they did on the court and off. So it's great work to them. I think in your packet, I have some charts on kneecap results, which came out in late January for all of us. And sort of, you know, the kneecap results indicate that the work is working. So that's what we like to see, that northeasterly curve. I think, you know, we've had steady overall growth in reading, in math, and writing. And as we look deeper, we see, when we look at strands within those things, reading strands like analysis and interpretation, word ID and vocabulary, informational text and things like that. What we've seen when we look through now is just a lot of balance, you know, which is nice from a programming standpoint. It sort of validates the work and shows that we've been really offering solid all-around programming. It doesn't give that glaring data response mandate that we've had in the past, where we've had big discrepancies and we've been able to say, here's our target. So, I mean, the kneecap is sort of delayed information. It's, by the time we get it in January, it's looking at last year's learning outcomes anyway. So its best use is really for like those professional development, instructional programming, big-picture items. In terms of looking at students and their work, you know, we turn to more of our local assessments. We're using our mid-year and everyday math assessment, which is more of a formative assessment for us to look at what kids know right now and what we can respond to. But when we do look at that, sort of the programming and our assessment data, the things that we've been targeting are, in reading, looking to get a little bit of emphasis on nonfiction text, response to informational text. That's been a big professional development drive of ours. And what we do is take a look at how that looks through the curriculum apps in each grade level, and make sure that we ramp up the content in every grade level, and that our kids are really going deep by the time they hit the upper grades. So that's sort of our work there. In math, we continue to work a good deal on number sense and numeracy. And in writing, as we looked at our writing outcomes, again, it's nice to see the work is working. We've been really working on open response and analytical thinking, and reasoning and things like that. And we did extremely well in the open response type items, but we saw a little bit of a deficiency in mechanics, relatively so. So we're sort of trying to embed all of that into our curriculum maps as well, and that's some of the work there. As far as an update on our PLC work, most of our grade-level teams are in their third and fourth cycles, intervention cycles, in reading and math. I think I gave you a specimen in your packets, and it's from first grade. And first grade, this is from their third cycle, on one side is the SMART goal, and on the second side is the reflective piece, which they do when they finish a cycle of work. And their focus was on complements of 10. Complements of 10 are the, it's that core concept, you know, three plus what equals 10, 10 minus 3 equals what. Really fundamental building blocks, number sense skills, that they just worked extremely hard to drive home. You know, we have intervention times, but also, you know, it's like Ms. Emerson's full immersion, you know, first graders can't get away from complements of 10 for this period. And I'd see teachers in the lunch line saying, I have 10 pennies, I got three in this hand, how many do I have in the other? You know, and really just forcing the issue so that the children can't escape until they got it. And if you look at their outcomes, on the back, the quantitative results, after their initial course of instruction, 64% of the students could respond in a written way, all of their complements of 10, and be accurate with proficiency. 44.5% of them had automaticity. And for automaticity, we look for about a three-second response. Four plus what equals 10? Six. And after the course of intervention, you can see all of what was done. They ended up at 95% in writing and 80% in automaticity, respectively. So a significant jump at this core skill. And that's really what we look to do, is really lock in, is what we deem their essential skills, and make sure they're there. So we're happy with those outcomes for that team. And in math, we continue to work on core math concepts throughout and reasoning throughout the building, which is most of our teams, our grade-level teams' year-long goals. In so far as technology integration goes, we've been, we've developed the New Franklin Wiki, and I think the URL is in your packet. And we've been using that a lot more than the webpage actually, to post a lot of our work, to do parent communications. It's a little more facile for teachers to just put stuff up quickly. It enables collaboration a lot more. In that forum, we use it with the PTO as well, and use it for student portfolio projects. So it's something that kids and teachers can add material to easily. There's a little bit of a compromise in security, but we haven't had any issues with that yet. So in all of our portfolio projects, we have a map of our tech portfolio projects, and all of those are on schedule. I believe that four out of the six grade levels have completed their projects so far this year. So, let's see, coming up at New Franklin, it's been really busy. Our fifth grade is just submitted a grant, Toyota Tapestry Grant, alongside the Seacoast Science Center, to supplement their ecology work through extended outdoor learning opportunities. So we're hopeful on the outcome of that. Upcoming events, next week, I do my kneecap information night, which is an explanation of student reports, lots of charts, graphs, diagrams, longitudinal data. It's a blast. Come on out. So our community spaghetti supper's on March 26th, our talent show April 15th. We just booked as part of our, to supplement the 5210 work. We have a musical theater production called Food Play that's coming to school. It's apparently Emmy award-winning, too, which I'm curious to see. There's been a lot of speculation about what Emmy possibly could have been for, but it's about making better nutritional choices, and so we're looking forward to that. I don't know, best supporting parsnip or something along those lines, probably. But so that's my work. That's my report for tonight. I'd be glad to take any questions that you have, anything out there on any of this.
I have a quick question if nobody else does. So I'm just curious, so in terms of this pre-post-test thing that you do, so the results are pretty impressive. My question in the back of my mind is, do you do like a follow-up post-post test to find out a little bit like a month later, how much they remember that?
No, but we sort of wonder about it. No, we do mid-year and end-of-year assessments. But the eternal question is, what's sticking?
Okay.
You know, in math especially, so much of the skills are foundational and build upon each other.
You could see it.
So they're prerequisite skills in a lot of ways. So it shows up in later assessments, but not explicitly. Do we come back a month and say, how do these kids do? We also, you know, if you look, you know, 80% We also, you know, if you look, you know, 80% of those students didn't, that means 20%, were not able to recall with automaticity. So, you know, they're still getting that support. We don't stop there. We just sort of stop at this documentation of the process.
Right. And so, and just one other quick question, since you are the dean.
I don't even have my elbow pads for that.
Are these SMART goals that you're talking about across the same goals across all elementary schools when it comes to math? Or every school is different?
Well, we have the same learning, we have the same learning expectations. So in the end, yes, you know, we all have this set of power standards and specific standards that we're teaching to.
Right.
I guess what we choose to target at a given time, this is biting off a piece. And that may vary between the schools, but in the end, we all, we have all the same learning outcomes.
Right.
But, you know, in terms of the numbers, is the SMART goal for Don Darrow the same number as New Franklin? I'd say that's not coordinated at this point, so.
But you all, but the power standards are in agreement.
Right. All of the required learning outcomes are the same. It's all just timing and approach. And also, sort of what dataset you're looking at to start with, you know, this group at an initial course of instruction started in one point, another class may start another point, and therefore, you, you know, you look to move groups of kids at different times and at different rates.
Right. But essentially, you're looking at individuals?
Yes.
George, were you noticing that the third grade shining lights were the first class to have full-day kindergarten? Were you seeing that?
I definitely noticed that.
Everywhere?
I really noticed that.
I know the scores are higher.
And you see it in the kneecaps as well. And that's our first year of full-day kindergarten group. And I look at the solidity of that group. And then, you know, the kneecap, for what it's worth, is a massive dataset and allows you a lot of pieces to look at. And when I look at the consistency of that group and the solidity, I think it's really affirming of that decision to have a full-day program for those kids, that first group through, because across the board, and I think in all the elementary schools, that's the case, so.
That's what it looked like to me, too. Great.
So this essentially starts to create the baseline.
Yes.
Yes. And it's a new baseline. It's a high baseline for that third grade if you look at them across the district.
Right.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Grossman.
Please don't laugh when I approach the lectern, Mrs. Brulette. Anyway, thank you for having us tonight. What I tried to do in my presentation tonight was essentially two things, to identify, kind of highlight, some different strategies that we've engaged in as a school that really target improving the ability of all students. And then to try to link those efforts to some results, and specifically, what I tried to look at was some longitudinal kneecap results. The first thing that I wanted to highlight is some of our efforts at early intervention. This has been an evolution over the past few years, and that evolution has culminated this year. We have teacher support teams for all grade levels, as all the elementary schools do. When students are struggling in any form or fashion, whether they are below the typical student or whether they're achieving, in some cases, above the typical student, we have a, groups that a classroom teacher can bring that child to, present the information, and engage in some brainstorming and problem-solving around that student's educational program. And what we did this year with our kindergarten teacher support team, or TST, was to do it a little bit differently than we've done in the past. It's a dedicated team for kindergarten. It meets once a week. It meets every Tuesday morning before school. It consists of the kindergarten teachers, of course, the reading specialists, guidance counselor, the ESL teacher, occupational therapist, speech and language pathologist, and our special educator at grades K through 2. And again, it is not just for special education students, and its purpose is not necessarily to identify students who might be in need of special education services. It's to look at students on the ground who are struggling. In most cases, those students are struggling because, again, they fall below the typical range of students that we would have. But in some cases, we have students who are sitting at a very high level, and it's a challenge to keep those students engaged in the day-to-day work of a kindergarten classroom. And so we've also engaged in some problem-solving around those students and their programs. The team brainstorm and collaborates to develop interventions and arrange for services to ensure that children's weaknesses are addressed and strengths are built on, and progress is discussed on a rotating basis. And this is really the key. These students are getting assistance regardless of whether they're identified or not. This team of teachers is working as appropriate, looking at the needs that these students have, to provide them the support they need to achieve at a high level and to be successful in school, or to achieve, in some cases, at a higher level. Some of the things that we try to address are in the area of behavior, speech, fine motor skills, social issues, and academic issues. And the last several years, there's been certainly an increase in terms of providing services, early intervention services, to students at the kindergarten level, regardless of whether identified or not. But this has been a more systematic way to look at these students' programs, to track their progress, and to regroup when something isn't working. And so these students are monitored on a six-week rotating basis. So we come up with a program, we develop those interventions. When six weeks are up, that student is revisited at the TST meeting, and we look at that progress and see if there are changes that we need to make. So that is just an example of some of the early intervention that our teachers have engaged in. For a sample of PLC work, I'm gonna, I'll explain this a little bit later on. I actually, I know it's very small here. This is a slide that I included that was actually from a presentation that I did last year. You may remember, our second-grade team was engaged in some work around math instruction. And their goal last year was that 100% of second graders would demonstrate proficiency, which they define as 90% accuracy, in attaining math power standards. And I presented this last year, and there were, I suppose, two major components of the work that the second-grade team did. One component was for a relatively small group of students who was below grade level. They had a session every morning where they did pre-teaching with these kids. They call it math club. They get them together. They've identified these students based on pre-tests, and they're hitting those skills that they need for that math unit. The other piece that they've done is for all of the students across the second grade. The second-grade teachers had taken some time over the summer, and they had aligned the everyday math curriculum with the Portsmouth Power Standards. So as they moved through the everyday math curriculum over the course of the second-grade year, they've got everything mapped out as to what power standards are being hit. And again, they're doing pre- and post-testing to look and see how those students are doing in attaining the power standards. And then, as a result of that, they're grouping students as they go through each unit of everyday math to make sure that those students are achieving those power standards. And it was funny, so I thought of this when I wanted to tie it to our kneecap results this year. And when I went back to my file to pull the presentation on, to pull the slide, I had a handwritten note from a teacher, one of the second-grade teachers kind of pulled it together for me last year. And I won't tell you exactly what it said, but they were not happy with their results last year. And you see, so they had 64% of the students achieved all 10 power standards, 20% achieved nine, and so on and so forth. And I remember at the time saying, this is good work, I think you learned a lot by doing this, and, you know, it's gonna inform our work in the future, and it has. As I said last year, they've incorporated it, it's something they're still doing, even though they're, they're doing a very different sort of SMART goal in their PLC this year. This has become integrated into the work that they do. So a little bit later, when we talk about kneecap results, they're gonna try to tie their work directly to the third-grade math kneecap results. Finally, one more effort that we're making this year, again, to move all students on, is we spend a great deal of time during our delayed openings reading a book called Teaching Reading in Small Groups. It's by Jennifer Sarovalo. She's from Teachers College at Columbia University. And what we did at the end of last year is we set things up so that we really partnered our reading specialists with specific grade levels. And so the reading specialists are still coming in and working, in most cases, with kids that are below grade level, in some cases, that are kids are at or above grade level. But they're also working with the teachers, kind of working along in this book to create strategy groups. So again, somewhat like what the second grade did with math, is to identify strengths and weaknesses that different kids have and group them in small groups to hit those specific skills that specific kids need at that time. And that is for all students, wherever they fall in the continuum. And if you go to the next page, and I debated whether I'd go back all the way to 2005, but I did it. And what you see as a result of efforts like these last year and this year, but I think these are, these efforts that have built on the work that's been done in years past, you see a really rather steady increase in the numbers of kids, where we have more and more kids at Level 4 and fewer and fewer kids at Level 1, and so on and so forth. It's a very steady progression with very few exceptions. And one of the things I was really pleased with in looking at this data, I think that we can be proud of the work we've done, the level we've achieved for the past several years. But in looking at this data, I noticed that this year, with our kneecap results, the movement up towards Level 4 was equal to or greater than the increase in any year previous to this year. And so I think to still be, having that kind of movement is something that our teachers can really be proud of. And then, the 2010 Grade 3 Math kneecap, you see here that we had 61% of those kids at Level 4, 36% at Level 3, 3% of them at Level 2, and no students at Level 1. So we had 97% proficiency this year in Grade 3 Math. And, you know, it's a standout figure. And you think, you know, can we account for this? Is this dumb luck? But, you know, so I go back and I look, I think, jeez, you know, what did this team work on last year? And I find, not dumb luck, no, I know, I'm just saying. I go back and I look and I see the work that this team did last year. And I think that we have to link that directly to that constant monitoring of progress and that constant strategy grouping and constant reteaching that they engaged in last year. And so I think that we see that the efforts that we've made, kind of across the disciplines, across the grade levels, have really made a very consistent difference in the level of achievement for all kids. Not just, you know, getting those, you know, Level 2 kids to Level 3 so that we can, you know, make AYP and that kind of thing, which we certainly want to, but moving Level 3 kids up to Level 4 and so on and so forth. So I think our teachers have a lot to be proud of in that regard. Any questions about that before I move on to current events and so forth?
I have a couple of quick ones.
Sure.
So just, so will you report back to us? Are you gonna look at the same slide, for example, that you did last year in terms of this Grade 2 goal and sort of give us a, sort of an update to see how the teachers are doing this year? Because you said some felt that that really wasn't good enough.
Yeah, it certainly could. They've got, again, you know, that's what is built into their practice. I actually, you know, I've got some of that data. It's not something that I'm actively looking at, but it's something that, you know, that is just built into their daily work. So I could certainly do that.
Okay. I mean, because since you're using a chart here to set a base for us to understand, and this was the first year that you're trying to measure that particular power standard, it would, you know, it's just interesting.
Right.
And the other question is about the early intervention, which I really think sounds pretty phenomenal, and the amount of work that it takes for everybody as an organized group to make this happen and then rotate through every six weeks. Is this a model that comes from somewhere that you've read, that you know, that was developed organically within the school?
I would say it was developed organically within the school. It's actually, it's a model that we, we talked about doing with the rest of the school at the end of last year and kind of over the summer. But some of the logistics get a little bit difficult when you're sharing specialists across grade levels. You look at kind of moving this model to all grade levels. I'm not gonna say it can't be done.
Right.
But we saw a lot of challenges with it. And I've been talking with a few people about maybe seeing whether we can revisit this. And essentially, what it is now is we have two other TST teams, one for grades 1 through 3.
Okay.
And one for grades 4 to 5. And so essentially, a teacher will make a request and will bring a student to that team. And again, it's a kind of a team of specialists and myself that meet and brainstorm around it. So in some sense, the logistics are different. It's also not as broad a base. I mean, we've clearly concentrated a lot of resources at the kindergarten level to get these kids up to speed early on. Be harder to duplicate that kind of broad-based support. But we have talked about, we kind of refer to it as a traveling TST, where, for instance, we would get together with the fourth-grade team, these specialists. We'd sit down with the four fourth-grade teachers and talk about the students they had on their docket and kind of revisit that on a consistent basis.
Right.
But it would take some doing to.
Okay. And my only, and my last comment is, it's interesting, Anne was saying earlier, that the third grade is the first cohort of full-day kindergarten, right? So here we are, these statistics you're looking at, in terms of zero at Level 1. These are third-grade students, you know. So again, it's just base information, but I think it's really beginning of a, probably a pretty interesting story.
Well, I know that we've looked at, I know that Mr. Zadrevac in particular has highlighted, I think particularly, our DRA reading data. And that really shows, which we go, you know, goes down to kindergarten.
Right.
Shows this really very clear progression in terms of this increase of achievement, so.
That's great.
Clearly pays off.
Thank you. Kent has a question.
I'd like to follow up on the early intervention. We just finished our section of the budget. Gets me a little scared, because would not that outreach counselor be an effect on this program that you have, that now that we're, you know, that's gonna be removed? I mean, here we're, and I think you've done an excellent job, presenting an issue that we have in today's modern schools, you know? How do we get to that student that has an issue? And I said this during the budget session, and I'll say it tonight, I don't totally understand the outreach program of guidance. But to me, I would assume that there was a critical part here that we, as a board, now have made a challenge for you to, you know, keep this model program going. What aspects, what hurdles do you see with that next year? I would assume it's fairly large.
As far as this is concerned, Ken, actually, our general guidance counselor, Sue Petterzani, is on this team. We have, at times, as a result of this process, we have pulled in Diana Callahan, who is our outreach therapist. We have pulled her in this year to work with, I think it's three kids at the kindergarten level, who've demonstrated some challenges with behavior and with self-regulation, and that's been very effective. I mean, I think clearly, next year, what we're going to do, you know, Sue Petterzani, our guidance counselor, she's all over the place, and I mean, in the best possible way. I mean, she is really somebody who's engaged in a lot of school-wide activities that, at some level, probably fall outside of counseling. They contribute a great deal to, I think, school culture and school climate. So, you know, there's a small number of students that we have at Little Harbor that are kind of avail themselves, or we avail them, of our outreach services. And we've already kind of started this process a little bit in thinking about how we maybe reprioritize some of what Sue does, so that Sue is working with these students who have these, you know, these really strong needs.
Well, you put my mind at ease to some degree. I still think we may be now having more, other than this, things that are dumped onto the, you know, regular guidance counselor that day, because obviously, one individual can only handle so much. And I also would like to just follow up also on the kindergarten. I would hope, as we're hearing from all three of you tonight, and we're looking at these numbers, and I remember the awful battle we had with city council to get that passed a number of years ago. I mean, it was not a pleasant time. It was a 5-4 vote. And I think we need to make sure when we budget present this year, that we show that money spent has made a difference and that, you know, it is not something that we want to start to look at and tear any of the foundation down. I think it's an outstanding example of when the taxpayer does, for a lifetime, you know, seldom can you show a lifetime of an outcome, but I really do think we're starting to see that. I think the third grade is a very good level to look at that, and probably in another three years. Lord willing, and we're still all alive, we can look at them when they graduate, and they're all going to Ivy League schools. If they wish.
Carol.
Just a quick comment, following up on what Kent said. I think, Mr. Grossman, that I do agree with what Kent was saying, and I have to say, being around Little Harbor School a fair bit, when you look at what Mrs. Petterzani does and you see her working, she's all over the place. She's doing so many things. She's doing three or four things at the same time. She doesn't look like she's sort of sitting around waiting for more responsibilities to be put on her plate. That's not the impression I get. And so I find it hard to believe that you can add responsibilities to her plate. I don't see, I don't, I don't get it. You know, I just don't, I understand where you're coming from, I appreciate what you're saying, but I don't think there's any way that you can slice it. I think it is a loss, and I think it will affect children in a very I think it is a loss, and I think it will affect children in a very personal way. And those are the kids that are really on the edge. And it's this kind of thing that, over time, just, you know, takes away from the system. And so I don't know, I understand what you're saying, but I just felt I had to make that comment.
Yeah, I mean, you know, look, I would have to acknowledge, obviously, that, you know, that losing Diane at Little Harbor, I mean, it's clearly a loss for us, you know, there's no getting around that. I mean, I think like everything else, the bottom line is, how do we make up for that? And I think the key here, one thing I was actually going to say to Kent earlier, I think when you look at the strength of like this kindergarten TST model, you know, it doesn't necessarily fall on the merits of any one person, it's the collaboration and putting together these people who, to some degree, are from, you know, sort of diverse disciplines, who are working together to brainstorm. And although this is not really technically like a part of our PLC work, it is a good example of sort of the PLC philosophy in terms of bringing a team together, that you really build some capacity. And this group of people is much stronger than even say, let's say, the four kindergarten teachers working together, and then special education working, and the guidance counselor working, that when these people get together, the sum is greater than the parts, so to speak. And I think that's where the strength of it comes, and those are the kinds of strategies I think we'll have to continue to employ as we go into next year.
Okay, thank you.
Tom.
Just, you know, I was just taking a look at the numbers that, back on some of the results just from Level One to Level Four, and I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, what impresses me most is not the fact that you've moved one group, but you've really taken a look at the perimeter, and it's, you know, the people that were at Level One that you've really moved, but also the people in the middle that you've moved out to Level Four. So we've had, you know, the middle hasn't really changed much, you know, the numbers really kind of look the same percentage-wise, but it's the numbers on the Level One and the Level Four that have changed dramatically. And that's really heartening, you know, very heartening to see, you know, that, obviously, you know, we had a lot of people that were performing in the middle, but we've really pushed people in both directions. We've dragged people from the bottom, and we've also pushed people to the top, so it's nice to see that level of data.
Thanks. That was certainly what I was trying to get at. I mean, I think rightly so, you know, we're often concerned about the kids who are below grade level, and we focus a lot of our attention there, and No Child Left Behind has kind of focused some of our attention there. But there's a lot of work that we do that maybe we don't kind of celebrate as much that really gets at all kids, and I think we've seen, seen the fruit of that efforts kind of from across the board.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, percentage-wise, you know, we've taken 300% growth from people in Level Four in 2005 to 2010, and, you know, over 87% going from math in '05 to 2010. I mean, those are solid numbers that I think, you know, I never get to see, because, to your point, we're always talking about, you know, how can we pull people up, you know, versus the people that we're, might be leaving behind, because we're not challenging them. So this is a good indication that we're really, there's a component that we don't speak of enough.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So before we get, did you have some, before we just get to Dandero, I just wanted to sort of comment on what Kent and Carol were saying, and actually just brought to mind, this is one thing that I actually really admire about educators, is that there's clearly going to be an impact on our decisions for you guys next year, but it's not what you focus on, you know? Educators tend to focus on the children. You pick yourself up, you assess what's going on around you, you work hard, and you make it work. And that's really truly a remarkable thing. So, you were going to say?
I just wanted to highlight just a few, just a recent event and a few upcoming events that we've got, we've got happening here at Little Harbor. Right before vacation, the Friday before vacation, Nicole Hopely, one of our first-grade teachers, had arranged for Ryan Higgins, he's a children's author, he came and read to all the Little Harbor students, did a great job presenting his book, Twaddleton's Cheese. I just wanted to say that at a school board meeting. And then another great thing that we've got going on is, as you, I think you know, I've talked about in the past, we have a fabulous garden that's going out and back Little Harbor School. Bill Haas, a parent volunteer, had really, he'd gotten a grant from Lowe's and built up our existing garden and our raised flower bed, he built a hoop house. And fourth-grade students are, have sold herb gardens. So we have a lot of people who've placed orders for the herb gardens, and those herbs will be, we assume, coming to fruition in the spring. Another recent thing that we've done this year, Gina Conley, our music teacher, has been bringing kids down, I think for some time, down to the Wentworth, Wentworth House down by the middle school. It's a day facility for older folks, and she's been doing holiday concerts. And this year, when we went and we spoke with the director there, we talked a little bit about trying to expand that relationship. And so Gina has been taking kids from different grade levels down on kind of an ongoing basis, not just to sing, but also to spend some time with some of the older people. It's one of those things that there's some tension there in terms of pulling kids out of class and taking the time to walk down, but it's been a great experience for everybody, and Gina's done a wonderful job just kind of cultivating that relationship. So we're very proud of that. March 24th, we've got our spaghetti dinner and silent auction. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it's just a fantastic community event. There are all kinds of incredible things up for auction. And then our fifth graders serve dinner to the assembled throng, and it's a great event, it's a great turnout. We'd love it if you all came. And then today, actually, we started Math Matters, which is kind of formerly known as the Amped Math Program, and we've really had a resounding participation this year. What was that, Mrs. Brulette? Was it 80 kids all together, is that right?
Eighty kids all together, yeah.
So we've got 80 students staying after school, roughly 40 in Grades Two and Three, and 40 in Grades Four and Five staying after school, each group one day a week. And we've got Mrs. Brulette, we have Karen Crowley, our computer teacher, who is working with her, has marks, a paraprofessional, four high school students, and I believe Mr. Zadovac is going to make the odd guest appearance there as well. So we're very excited about that turnout, and you said it was a great day today, Linda.
It was great.
Kids are very excited. And then finally, I'd invite you all to Little Harbor School, this is going to be something really exciting to see. March 17th, I think I had spoken the last time I was here, we had just had an initial meeting with the American Architecture Institute of New Hampshire at this Box City project that the fifth grade is doing. And the unveiling of Box City is going to be on March 17th. And so what they're going to be doing is they've, they've kind of conceived, and they're going to be building a scale city, which is going to be erected in the gym. And it's a great process, there's a permitting process that the kids have to go through, and they have to establish laws and so on and so forth. And so March 17th, we're going to have kind of like an open house, like a celebration that night, have that kind of open to the public. And so that's going to be something I think is very exciting to see. The kids have been really enthusiastic about it. The architects have done a fabulous job, and we've got some great volunteer support. A shout-out to the Dunkin' Donuts people up Route One who provided us with their boxes, great architectural material, who knew? So anyway, we'd love if you could make it for that.
Anne, you have?
I wanted to tell you, I visit the Wentworth home, the Mark Wentworth home, about once a week, and the residents there absolutely love the children coming. Oftentimes, they don't always remember from where, but they do remember that the children were there, and they brought them either gifts or cards, pictures, that they would sing for them, and they just absolutely are delighted to see the children. In fact, I'm going to be there tomorrow for Ash Wednesday.
That's nice to hear. We have, we have a small group of kindergartners going tomorrow.
Oh, white folk.
I think, I think late morning.
What time are they going, do you know?
I think late morning. I want to say, I'm going to say 10:30.
Yeah.
I could be wrong there. And what's nice actually is that the kids really enjoy it, too.
Yes, well, I wanted you to know how much they appreciate it, and every time I'm there, they're talking about it, so it's wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lovely.
Not that I'm keeping score, but I'm keeping score. The fact that our kids walk down and go to the Mark Wentworth home is yet another way that our kids are giving back to this community. And I've said this before, our kids give back in so many ways, and I think it's great that you highlight that. And also, I am so thrilled that the Amped program renamed something else is still there, because my son was lucky enough to participate in it two years, he's now in sixth grade, and it was such a phenomenal experience for him. He still thinks he's really good at math now, and he is. But when he went into it, he didn't think he was good at math, and that really changed the way that he looked at how he could, you know, be successful there. And the fact that now 80 kids are doing it, I think there were, what, six kids in his first class? And he had a high school kid that he loved. And it's a phenomenal, again, again, I'm keeping score, another way kids are giving back. Our high school kids were coming down and providing that educational experience for the younger kids. It's, it's just a great, great program, so the fact that there's 80 kids involved is awesome.
And it's great the high school kids are able to come, because as Linda would attest, we had some headaches this year, just in terms of capacity. It's ultimately, it's a capacity issue, and so each year we've tried different ways to kind of, you know, identify kind of a target group and whittle that number down, and, don't laugh. And so this year, we made a conscious effort, we made a conscious effort initially to expand it, but then even midstream, we heard from a number of kids and a number of parents who weren't initially able, and there was some legwork that took place, and we're able to expand it a little further out, and so...
Which goes back to what the chairman said, that's what educators do, and good for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's a walking, too. They're walking to the Wentworth home.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm here just to share some of the efforts that we've been working on since I was last here in November. I think a big focus at Dandero has been the Japanese lesson study, which we really started back in September, and teachers are working with a consultant, Susan Deese, to really focus in on the planning and implementation of math instruction. And in doing so, they are using their common planning time to take what they've learned through that process to also apply it to other content areas. And so it's really helped, I think, for them to collaborate with each other among the grades, but also to share out during staff meetings about what's working and maybe what needs to be improved. So you can hear from the upper grades, the younger grades, about some of the conversations that they're seeing that are similar, either in areas that are of great strength or of areas that are of weakness. So it's been a great addition to the everyday conversations that are happening. Our Kneecap results was a huge success for us. We obviously increased from the previous year, and so teachers are celebrating the results in both reading and math, and looking really deeply at the trends that they're seeing in alignment with their end-of-the-year, or sorry, end-of-the-unit math assessments, as well as their DRA data, but also their mid-year math assessments, and determining if the results that they're seeing from Kneecap are in alignment with what they're seeing in the everyday work of their students. And so with that piece, they've really put emphasis on, again, looking at different trends as what we can do from other, as a whole school or across grade levels. So three through five are engaging in conversations, and K through two are engaging in conversations about what support seems to be put in place so that when they transition to the upper grades, it's a little bit easier, but also thinking ahead to middle school and what we need to get our students prepared for when they enter the middle school years. With the Kneecap results also comes into place the PLCs, and during that, the PLC time, they're again analyzing data. They're really looking right now at their reading components and looking at the DRA scores and saying what they, or looking at what they need to do differently, but also looking at the power of vocabulary instruction and how that will play out in nonfiction work as well as fiction work. Grade Three is really looking at tying that into their writing component and preparing them to do some more open response questions. Grade Two is looking closely at small group instruction and looking at the data and saying, looking at student needs and determining how to place students in small groups based on those needs. And so those, those groups will change over a four-week period, and so reading specialists are really in mentoring and supporting teachers so that students are getting, in some classes, three adults working in this partnership so that they're rotating through based on the results. Intervention blocks has been a huge focus, I would say, since December, and really looking at that both from a reading standpoint but also a math standpoint, and putting things in place during the school day, but also extending learning time so that you have some teachers coming in early and meeting with two or three students, you have some teachers staying late. We looked at paraprofessional schedules, and instead of starting them right at 8:15 and ending at a 3 o'clock time, we have some coming in at 9:00 and staying until 4:00. You have some coming in right at 8:00 and working with students ahead of time and preparing them for class. So that's been also a nice addition. Grade Four has built in an intervention cycle after their recess, and so teachers, one teacher is doing math and one teacher is focused on more writing in the content areas, and the other teacher is doing some more science experiments, and so the students are rotating through. And it's been really great feedback from parents but also from students to see that they are able to be successful in all of those areas. They, too, have really sort of the Amped Math Program. And what they decided to do is, we had a high school student who said, I really have a, want to bring a friend, she's really interested in doing this, and could you help her work with some of these students who may not think they're good at math but want to be part of this? And so that's where a teacher has partnered with her to really encourage some of those students who are on that cusp of wanting to do it but not feeling that they have the strength to do it. So that's been wonderful. Grade Two, we have high school students in two or three times a week working in classrooms with students. And so when I'm in there observing, what one of the teachers is doing is she's giving her focus lesson, and then when they break out to do their individual work, she sends those students who really are excelling off with that high school student, and then she spends more time with those students who need more time on task, and then they rotate through, and that person will follow that one group so that he's going through the different centers throughout the math time. Math Superstore is a program that has started in the entire school, so it's kindergarten through grade five. Parents are organizing that, and it's just additional math work that is sent home based on levels. They come in weekly, collect all of the results from homework, it's, participation is, you know, based on family need, and then they're tracking to see which class is participating the most and what those, what the scores look like. I also have that same group of parents working with some students who are those overachievers and doing small group math instruction at the end of each Wednesday, I think it is, in the cafeteria. So there's about two groups going with three or four students. I have Title One reading, we've been really looking at schedules, trying to be creative in the needs to make sure that students are getting their core instruction but also getting their Title One support. We recently hired a new Title One tutor, and so her day starts around 9:45, and so she's staying late and working with these students. And what I'm noticing is those older students who are more reluctant to participate are willing to engage with her because there's not that pressure of the other students observing. So that's been a great piece. I talked about paraprofessionals. Before and after-school math tutoring is something that is in place, and that's Grades Two, Three, and Four. We're trying to work on Grades Five. There's a web-based program called Alex with a K-S at the end, and there's conversation about how to support paraprofessionals to support students so that they could go onto this web-based program, and then teachers could pull out those results, and then tailor homework really specified to meet their needs. And what I just found out is that program is now aligned with EVM, so we can really look at our math program with this web-based program and make some concrete decisions on how to move forward. With the recent bullying piece and the new protocols that have been put in place, I've put a lot of emphasis on a program called Open Circle. And what Open Circle is, is it's a social and emotional learning curriculum that is based for children in Grades K to Five. And I went to an admin training and was greatly impressed with the amount of evidence that they presented that works when you start working with students in Grades Kindergarten and seeing those results as they become engaged in an ongoing conversation that is in an open circle. So the students sit in chairs, there's a program that goes with it, and it engages students to have a voice and to share some of those struggles that they're facing from a social, social need. And all of my staff, except for three people who have been hired within the past three years, are trained. So what we're trying to do is put that in place in the Unified Arts area as well as in, in the classroom. And so my counselors right now are working with teachers to really make sure that it is in place. It takes a little bit of coordination because a lot of them are doing it at the same time, and so we're trying to tweak schedules so that they can be available to go in and assist with those conversations. It's two times a week for 15 minutes. Grade Five is finding that the students want to share much more than they have in that 15 minutes, and so they're trying to work in partnership with, with the counselors to really tailor that and determine what is an open circle conversation versus what is a counseling conversation. Parents and PTA have been a huge support. They've been in offering assistance from, as far as volunteering and trying to get more volunteers in the classrooms to support student growth. They've also have opened up different ideas for looking forward for next year for funding so that we can move the classroom beyond the four walls, or the curriculum beyond the four walls of the classroom. And so there's conversation right now with the PTA on how to do that and how to take students on a field trip to the Lowell Mills when they're studying their Industrial Revolution, and trying to find ways that parents can be more actively involved in the classrooms to support students. to support students, but also to support teachers. In the past, I guess this, this month, yesterday we had Senator Stiles come to Dandero and she read Oh, The Places You'll Go to kick off our Reading Across America Month and as part of our CINNY money, we have, have put certain systems in place. And so we're having a big family literacy night on March 29th and so with the partnership of the art teacher, classroom teachers are encouraging students to choose their favorite book and the art teacher has, has created time, or set aside time in her day to have them create a balloon, an image of where the book took them, either to a different place, to a connection, to maybe a memory. And so on March 29th, what we will do is we'll have all of those balloons, paper balloons displayed and they're creating a scavenger hunt so that parents and families can go and locate a balloon and see where those children have, have escaped through their reading. Ralph Fletcher, who's a writer and author, he is coming on March 22nd and so he's going to do small group workshops with students and teachers and so that's a very exciting day for us. We also partnered with the, I have to be careful, the breakfast rotary because I guess there's also a lunch rotary. And so what they have done is, when we were kids, when I was a kid, there was the Book It through Pizza Hut. And so what they decided to do was create a program called the Page Turners Club and Dos Amigos Downtown has offered that, a gift certificate. So for every student who's read X amount of minutes, they'll get a gift certificate to get a free kids meal. And so they created these fabulous posters and they're coming into schools, into our school to listen to students read and to really encourage that reading at home. Dandero Idol is a hot topic among staff and among the fifth grade and so that is on April 7th, that is our largest fundraiser to help support the cost of e-school, which is at Ferry Beach in Saco Maine. Again, it's a, it's a karaoke night as well as, as well as an auction. And so each staff member has been asked to participate and then grade five is also performing. We are looking at No Screens Week, trying to go back into the 5-2-1-0 piece and really highlighting the two again. We've put the Scholastic Book Fair during that week and we're also planning a family math night that week so that there's something to do at night for families instead of watching television. And so those are some big events that, that staff is really rallying around as well as parents.
Great. Any questions? Tom?
Yeah, the, I found the comment about the open circles quite interesting. I didn't know if you were piloting this program for Mr. Shea and Mr. Ruskman to implement or, but is this something that you were able to, you worked with the, the teaching community and asked them to take this time out of a specific class?
It was actually there before I came and so what I, what a lot of the conversation around was, that I was having with teachers was how do we be proactive and teach students' skills so that we're not reaching this state of having everything become a bullying event? And somebody came forward and said, "Kate, you know, most of us are trained in open circle, why don't you look into this?" And so I looked into it and at first, you know, it was much more of, I felt like it was more of a program that was selling itself to me. And then I said, "You know, why don't I go and see this?" And so I think the goal is, is really to get this up and running and then share it out and say, you know, this is a success that we're seeing over the course of these years. We do incident reports at school and so one of the pieces of that is to look at how many incidences are reported to me and seeing if we can tailor that to the open circle lessons so that those incidents will decrease.
No, I just find the fact that, here we are talking about the fact that we're losing resources in that specific area of counselors in intervention, that, you know, here we have some remedial opportunities that can be integrated on a daily basis that, you know, the community can wrap their arms around. So I'd be very interested to sort of, you know, hear what some of the results are, you know, later on.
Wonderful. And I can, I have a little pressure, I can leave with you.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry, Kent.
So, eight months, how do you like it?
It's been great. It's definitely, I have to be honest, the budget season's been a learning curve for me.
Yeah, you didn't have that in the other.
It's been interesting to, obviously, coming out of a charter world where you, I felt like I had a little more control over those pieces. And being here, we're, we're presenting budgets to Mr. McDonough, looking at how we allocate money and what is the best use of allocation of that money and then having a school board decide in partnership with city council has definitely been a learning curve, but it's also, you know, been a great experience for me to go through. As far as Portsmouth, I obviously love being in Portsmouth, I feel a great amount of support from my colleagues. I have teachers who believe in the vision and are wanting to work in that direction of, of obviously increasing student achievement, but also thinking outside the box on how to do that. And so that's been, that's been great. Parent support has, I can't complain, I mean, they've been rock stars.
So we haven't scared you away yet?
Not yet, no.
Thank you.
Dan?
I kind of like the idea of your flexible scheduling. Has that been going on for very long and how's it going?
We started it right after Christmas of looking at the, at the times that really paraprofessionals were meeting student needs and part of that came out of our focus monitoring work that we're doing with the state and addressing not only special ed needs, but some of those students who don't qualify for special ed but still struggle. And so one of the big pieces that we started to focus in on was thinking ahead to next year was the placement of students as they progress through the grades. And if you put students with similar needs who may need some more additional support together, what that would look like. And then from there came the conversation of how do we extend the day? Do we need somebody in at 9 o'clock? Could they come in at 9:30 if a class has a special right in the morning? And that's where it evolved from.
Sounds great.
It's been great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time this evening. You have a long, busy day, starting probably what, 5:30, 4:30?
We had to do our power walk.
Have a good night. Okay, moving on to Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I provided board members with an e-copy of the financial report, but I've also brought hard copies this evening. I tried to get one out to everybody so hopefully everybody has one, if anybody needs one, I still have a couple extra copies. On any case, it's a pretty straightforward report this month. Overall, you know, the general fund is tracking according to plan, we're actually about 2% under where we were last year, so that's within acceptable variation in, in my world. There is, there are some slight variances in salaries and benefits, but of course, they net out on the positive side, which is the way we like to have it and that's, that's a good thing. I'd like to point out that through the efforts of the administration and staff, we are again showing that we're about $100,000 ahead of where we were in the past on substitutes. So that initiative is so far working well. If you look at the departmental operating expenses, you can see that some are up, some are down. Again, those are just timing. I expect that some people have the Pavlovian reaction to this time of year, saying, "Is he going to freeze it? So let me spend it, make sure I get what I need." But nonetheless, all the expenditures, expenditures appear, appear to be within allowable variances and they certainly, you know, for the month and they certainly are following acceptable and predictable patterns so far for total appropriations against, you know, total expenses. So at the moment, I think we're, you know, we're right on target.
Tom, yes?
Steve, hello, Mr. Bartlett. I really appreciate the narrative. I think that's great. Just, you know, you can eliminate a lot of questions by just putting that through and I, I think that's a great addition to the report. On the, you know, knowing that we're what, almost 70%, you know, two-thirds of the way through the year, variables are getting maybe fewer and maybe smaller and the fact that we're tracking below, do you see any chance that we're going to be continuing on this track of maybe, you know, 3%, 4%, you know? Is it, I mean, there's the likelihood that, you know, we might actually track very favorably this year?
Again, the, the big variable will be, will be the special ed expenses.
Always.
The predictions change on a, you know, change every week, if not every other day, based on the needs of the kids that, that come in and go out. So it is, I think the, the pieces that, that we can control directly, I think, you know, we're, we're right on target with that and I think we have, right now, it looks like we would have enough by managing it the way we are to meet any of these extra fluctuations. I'm a little hesitant to predict anything other than that at this stage of the game.
I'm not looking for any, you know, Swami crystal ball, just the numbers look really good. Yeah. Thank you.
Dan?
Steve or whoever, the only one that catches me out under is line one, our Code 156 speech seems to have an extreme under special ed, is there any certain?
Yeah, because we, we're using contract services instead of salary and benefits for that piece, so therefore we just have a little mismatch.
So it's a, it's a year?
No, it just, just means that, you know, sometimes the beginning of the year, you think you're going to find an employee to handle something.
Oh, okay.
And in some cases, that's not the case, so you have to contract out. So it's, it's just a swap.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
So just a quick, so is that a change going to outside contract services in that particular line item? Is that what you mean or just in general?
No, it's, we, in general, I, we had hoped that when we put this FY11 budget together, they had the prospect for doing it, you know, with employee-based services and it ended up, sometimes those are tough specialties to fill the way you need them, so we're ended up doing it as a contract service. And so therefore, it's just the expenses are not in the same spot that the budget is in.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. So moving, moving back to old business.
Yeah, so in your package, you have three policies that you saw our first reading on our last regular business meeting. Three policies really required as a result of our work with Primex to get the better rate, ultimately, if we get all these policies in place. Motor vehicles, seatbelt use, slip, trip, and fall, and temporary alternate duty policies. We'll approve this evening.
So, motion, motion to accept, we can take them one at a time, although I think they're probably pretty easy, but we'll start with the first. So motion for, to accept second reading on motor vehicle?
Motion approved.
You need a second.
Second.
Okay, otherwise we wouldn't accept the policy. So is any discussion? Yes, Kent?
Just, just two points. Under paragraph three, all Portsmouth department vehicles with the exclusion of school buses and then you go down to the next paragraph, which is a one-line, only school buses shall be exempt from the policy. Is there a reason we kind of double the verbiage in this? And then where, where do we stand on state statute, state law to have this policy in regards to that? I believe all taxable vehicles, as they, the wording I've seen, are, you are to be wearing a seatbelt. So, I mean, is there any wording on that? But again, I guess my first question to you, ma'am, is the, why we, we twice put down buses are exempt? Why is it not just once? A reason?
We wanted to be absolutely clear that they were exempt.
Well, that's why I think the standalone line of only buses shall be exempt from this policy pretty well clarifies that, but I didn't know if there was another reason.
No.
For me, it's the Department of Redundancy Department.
You know, we, this policy came to us recommended by Primex.
And why is Primex recommending that? Because I believe there is a state statute that says if, if it's a government vehicle, you have to wear a seatbelt anyway. I mean.
Well, and it's, you know, it's good practice regardless, so, but they want us to have this, to get that preferred rate, to actually have it in policy form as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess your question, just a little unclear, so there is no statute that says school buses have to have seats, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Right, okay.
And in fact.
That's why it's exempt.
The literature on that, that in an accident, a seatbelted child in the school bus is actually at more risk than not.
So, okay, just clarification.
Although this one's a clarification on that, Kathleen, is that they're labeled as short buses, they are required to have it if it's 15 passengers or less.
There's different distinctions in size and number of passengers.
Because, I mean, the special ed or, and/or the, the shorter buses.
Provider buses, for instance.
Must have them.
Have seatbelts.
According to the state statute.
Tom?
So my only question on the motor vehicle was, it doesn't actually state that school buses are not technically Portsmouth School Department vehicles, you know, because we do not own them, you know, or contracted. It just says with the exception of school buses. I was just curious, you know, that, you know, it doesn't necessarily say that school buses are not Portsmouth School Department vehicles.
That's the situation right now, so when you're writing a policy, you wouldn't want to.
So you're looking at the fact that we could actually buy school buses and then the policy wouldn't need to be amended? Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we'll take a roll call vote?
Carol Chelman?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Why not?
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to accept the second slip, trip, and fall policy.
So moved, second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, another roll call vote?
Carol Chelman?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Okay, and the last of these policies from the old business, a motion to accept temporary and alternate duty for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, conversation? Seeing none, take a roll call vote?
Carol Chelman?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Great. Moving on to new business, Mr. McDonough, what's up?
Well, we have a scholarship that Mr. Wyatt can help us with a little bit for approval this evening. It's the Henry Margeson Scholarship.
That's correct. I would just like to say, I apologize for the two typos in my memo, but I'm also proud to say I've kept my perfect record of having typos in things I send to you. So I apologize for that. But several months ago, the high school was contacted just out of the blue by a gentleman from California, was a Portsmouth native, a graduate of Portsmouth High School, who wanted to set up a scholarship in the name of his grandfather, Henry Margeson. So Shannon Grenier and I worked with him in getting this scholarship together and he's generously offered to fund, for a period of five years, a $2,500 scholarship and he wanted to be sure it got into the scholarship book this year, so it actually is in the book pending your approval. His grandfather was a 1919 graduate of Portsmouth High School and after he graduated from Portsmouth High School, he went to West Point and led an infantry regiment across Europe during World War II. And if you Google him, there's interesting reading about him if you feel so inclined. So he's already sent the first check. He has indicated he may, given his personal circumstances, in the future, extend this beyond the five years and we may work with him in converting it to creating a trust corpus that could live longer than just the five years. But he, he was very committed to having the first one awarded this year. And the scholarship that was written takes into account the, like many new scholarships, there's a high, as you know, a high amount of money available to students at graduation for their first year and then that drops dramatically. So we've encouraged people who are setting up new scholarships to have them awarded at graduation, but actually paid towards the second year of college after the successful completion of the first year. And most people seem to really understand that and have set them up as he did in this case. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. I should just add that his, Mr. I should just add that his, Mr. Margeson's two daughters still live in the area, one in Portsmouth, then one in Exeter.
Okay. Any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on acceptance.
Carol Chellman.
Yes.
Rebecca Remison.
Yes.
Kent LaPage.
Yes.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Mitch Shulman.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
Leslie Stevens.
Yes, and a very generous thank you to this family.
And Clay Haywood.
Yes.
Very good.
We've already thanked him, but we will send something additional out through the Ed's office. This is one of the largest scholarships that we have. It's phenomenal.
Huge.
And very generous. It's very generous. And it was great to work with. I have one quick question.
Yes.
We had had another scholarship in our packet, I think, a couple of weeks ago.
That request has been forwarded to Mr. Sullivan, and I believe his intern, Mr. Nukas, is working on the information.
Yeah, Bob did that. I wasn't involved in that one, so I can't really give any help. So that is not in our book? I don't know if that's in the book or not.
It doesn't show yet. I just looked.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. We've already taken up B, so we'll move to C on the list of new business.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that the school board establish this year's graduation date is Friday, June 10, 2011.
Okay. Motion to accept that.
Both approve. So moved.
Second. Leslie, second. Okay. So conversation about that, discussions. Yes, Kent, sorry.
Well, knowing that I have one graduating this year, I appreciate it. But are we qualified under the days that have been missed by snow days, alas, though?
Yeah, we wrote a letter, actually, to the commissioner. And while we haven't received the formal letter that I hoped I would be able to share with you, we've heard through email, through Ed Murdo, that that wouldn't be a problem. Actually, it would be the 174th day.
So we're short one day?
One day. But we've essentially been granted permission from the DOE.
Hours, right? Hours.
Yeah, we certainly meet the hourly requirement.
Okay.
Well over 990 hours that are required. But it would be actually on the 174th day. But, you know, folks have to set the, you know, the project graduation and, you know, arrangements have to be made, et cetera. And so we went through all that. We acknowledged how we advanced the calendar up with the March 18 day. And so we've been given permission there.
Thank you.
Yes, Rebecca.
I just have a couple of questions. With celebration, graduation, and everything, I wonder why we hold graduation on a Friday night? I mean, it seems that that would be, that would sort of lend to the going out, partying atmosphere. And then I also question why we have them graduate so much earlier and what kind of disruption that is to the rest of the kids who are continuing on in school. I just, it's something I've never understood, and maybe someone could enlighten me.
Well, Savannah, here's your chance.
I'm so excited it's the 10th, if that's the way we're going. Yay. I don't really understand what you're saying. Do you think there's a disruption when we leave a week early to the kids that are still there?
Well, the normal calendar is ending the 21st, so it's two weeks. And I don't know how things happen now, but when I was there, it was very free-flowing. The seniors would come in, come out. They were cleaning out things. They were doing final wrap-ups. There was practice on walking. And it just, I guess I just don't understand why they're let out two weeks early. Why don't, I mean, if we have them until, you know, for 180 days, let's have them for 180 days. I just, I don't understand. Is it like a treat? You graduated, you're let out early, and then, so that might actually not be a question for you. But, and then the other thing is, having it on a Friday night, sort of, I don't know if that encourages, you know, we always hear kids go out who don't attend celebration graduation. There, you know, are incidents of drinking and driving and partying. And I wonder if it was on a school night, a Sunday afternoon graduation, for example, if that would maybe curtail that. And I'm not asking to change the date. This is fine for this year. But just, you know, people fly in. They say, oh, well, we're flying in. Well, you're going to either fly in on a Friday and miss work that Friday, or you fly in Saturday, go to graduation Sunday, and fly back Monday. So I don't, I don't see the scheduling as the main reason. I'm just wondering why. And if, you know, Friday night's a party night, Sunday night, not so much.
Linda.
I can just feel this one, having lived through it twice now. So first of all, so I've done the celebration graduation. I am telling you, they are so strict, it is not even funny. There isn't even any room to breathe.
The children who don't participate in that.
Rebecca, you'd be shocked to see how many people go. It's really a highly attended. It's like the place to be.
Yeah.
You go because it could be the last time you're going to see some of your buds. And it's a big deal. You go to this stuff. And I think one of the reasons they do, they let you out early is UNH has orientation, like the rest of the kids that go into school, the kids who go to UNH or some of these other colleges, you go to orientation. Colleges are out, you know, they get out in May. So they sort of prolong their plans for incoming freshmen.
Okay.
Until that time, you can't, you know, be planning in the middle, whatever, of the time you have. So they go. So it's not like they're idly sitting around looking for something to do or cause problems with. You have kids going to work, but celebration graduation is a big deal. I don't think that they spend any problems with it for as long as I can remember. It's really tightly managed. And so people aren't, it's not like when you were in high school or when I was in high school and things were way looser.
Right. I just, because it then gives them a Saturday night that's not celebration graduation. I'm just wondering if there's a way to, you know, encourage it to be even safer.
It is so tight, you're not even allowed to drive your car home after. So you go to celebration graduation, and your parents have to come pick you up the next day. You're not allowed to get in your car because you're too tired to drive. You've been awake all night.
Right. But I think you're asking about the other kids who don't go.
Right. Or, you know, to extend the whole weekend sort of gives them that. I mean, it's just a question.
Yeah.
Well, noted. Kent and then Leslie.
And I'll follow Linda a little bit on that, because I do remember the year that we did have an issue with celebration graduation. Every parent was called. I have a very good friend, and two kids, two kids ruined it for everybody. And every parent, you know, you just graduated a while ago. And every parent was called to come and pick up their kids because of these. And there wasn't one complaint about that, because that was it. Now, in regards to the other kids, Rebecca, that don't go, somewhere we cut the umbilical cord. And that's the beginning of adulthood. And hopefully, we have instilled on these kids what is right and what is wrong. And obviously, we know that kids will make wrong decisions. And having it on a Friday for those who participate, whether it be project graduation, I think, it's a family time. It's a celebration. It's a time to recognize successes and so forth. Much different than colleges and so forth. But, you know, for some, this will be a final step of family ties for a long, long time, those going into the military and so forth. And again, some things are tradition. And as far as I know, we've always had it on a Friday. And I think that's part of the tradition of doing it. In regards to the interruption to the other side, I'll say this, from those that I know that are teachers, they actually appreciate it because they're trying to get the underclassmen, the junior sophomores, and freshmen prepared for the next year as they do their testing and so forth. And here we go again with guidance. I know that's a big week for guidance to prepare for the next year and so forth.
I'm just going to, last year as a junior, I was in a few classes with a bunch of seniors in it. And as much as you want to say seniors are devoted, there was a lot of senioritis going on. And they graduated a week before we did. And you can say they missed a week of learning or whatever, but it was the nicest break ever. We actually learned and people were, so I feel like, for me, and that's like, a lot of teachers say the same thing. They're just like, at this point, we just want them out because that week, we could focus a little bit more. And the other thing, I had a teacher who was here a few years ago, and they said that they had so many snow days that they had to push it back so the seniors stayed when the other kids had to stay. And she's like, I just wish they would have left. Like, and it's a lot for the morale of the graduation. You have the week, you practice. We have our banquet. Prom kicks off the week before. So we have, senior prom's June 3 this year. So I think it's part of the tradition. So I like the fact that we all go out and the week before we actually graduate is more about bonding and not so much about school.
Leslie.
Celebration graduation also involves a tremendous amount of parent-volunteer time. And so it would be really hard to ask parents to do that on a weeknight, like a Sunday night going into a workday on Monday, because many of those parents stay up all night with those kids. So I think that that's another reason why it's on a weekend evening.
Okay. So this has been, the motions on the table with the second, so all in favor of accepting June 10?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next up.
Yeah, so there are the four job descriptions that have been, actually, Mr. Zadovick and Ms. Simons met with a collective group of staff for input on this draft that you saw as we went through the budget process.
Uh huh.
And trying to gear up and how we can move forward with our, you know, basically new position as well as elevated coordinator's positions. So we bring them before you this evening for your approval, so that we can begin the process of posting it, hiring, and actually working collectively as a team to move forward into next year. So that's why these job descriptions are before you this evening. The Director of Pupil Instruction and Support, the three coordinator's positions, elementary, middle school, and high school.
So if nobody has any objection, we can take them all as a group, and then we can just discuss any issues that come up. So a motion to accept all special ed for high school, middle, elementary, and Director of Pupil Instruction and Support.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Yes, Kent.
Ed, I know this was, you know, a spinoff on the budget, but I also think it was somewhat of you looking at the structure of the beginning of maybe department heads and how things flow and so forth. And I think my only concern as I look at this is that the three special education coordinators at the different levels, I get to, I'm hoping everything works, okay? I think we're breaking new grounds here. I don't think it's a bad thing. I think it's an unknown issue. But I get to the elementary one. And can you explain to me how that happens with the coordination of all three buildings, individuals, the reporting structure on that? I feel that's going to be kind of the audity out there. You know, middle school is going to have one principal to report to. High school's going to have one principal to report to. But then we get down to the elementary, and I'm not quite sure of the structure. And it was, when I looked at this over the weekend, it was like, oh, yeah, never thought of that during the budget session. And I don't think we had it fully, or you had it fully developed at that time.
Well, the only thing I would say is that it currently is what happens now. We do have a coordinator who is PEAP and also services all three of those elementary schools. So you can think about it multiple ways. The way I've thought about it is the caseload thinking. There's about 30 to 35 children at each of the elementary schools who've been identified. So that gets us roughly 90, 95, 100. It's 90 some odd at the middle school. It is a little bit higher at the high school. There's about 150 some odd students. So, you know, thinking about it that way, it's already been in practice, and it's worked well. Beth Satier has served as the coordinator in the past between, you know, she travels around to each of the SEP meetings.
Correct.
You know, and kind of cycles through. I think this will probably require a little more time in the elementary school buildings than maybe has currently gone on. So I think it's going to be a reallocation of one's time than it has been in the past. But you're right. I mean, it's going to be maybe a little smoother, a little bit easier to work just in one building directly with a principal. I think there are some.
So that coordinator will have to report to all three plus the PEAP.
And they'll work very closely with the Director of Instruction and Support.
Right.
And they'll be, they'll kind of be the go-to person for special education in that, you know, in the buildings, those children, right?
What evaluations do we, or do you see? I mean, we may not at this time that it's successful, it's not successful. I mean, it's a hard thing that, you know, you lose a year with a child, and it's a tough thing. Is there something there that we could put the emergency brakes on?
Well, I don't, as I say, I still, I think we're going to be better served for this. We are not losing our case managers or any of the other special education support we currently have in place that we provide students. So there'll be no adjustment there. It's just how we're thinking about coordinating the, it's just a site-based model, basically, versus a central office administrator there.
Which I prefer, I mean, in our discussions with you, I've told you, I prefer that anyway.
Yes, Anne.
I just had a question. If I understand correctly, the people who are already on site are expected to apply for these coordinator positions?
That's correct.
These are not new positions, but a new job description for positions in those, on those sites?
That's correct.
So maybe more than one person who applies for the position in, say, at the middle school, for example?
It's a wide open.
Okay. But it's people who are already on site. We're not planning on, this is not a new position where we're hiring another person to do these jobs.
That's right. It's really a zero sum game.
I think that's not declared.
Oh, I appreciate your help with that. So it's really a stipended additional 12 days.
To somebody who's.
And it'll be open within the ranks of the current teaching force.
Right.
To apply.
Right. I would think the biggest change in all of this really is that not so much the coordinator necessarily, but the next position, which is the Director of Pupil Instruction and Support, who they would then report to or work with. That's the big change. Any other thoughts or conversation on this? If not, all in favor of accepting the job descriptions?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you. Okay. And so the last up we have is first reading, disregard where it says second reading. The first reading of the Portsmouth School Facilities, use of.
Yeah, so at a workshop meeting, maybe six weeks ago, you looked at a draft policy. The suggestion was that we would bring it forward for an initial first reading, work as a board to schedule a public input session where people could come and weigh in and hit either side of the issue. And then, you know, late, probably May, ideally, your regular business meeting in May, there'd be an approval of the policy, because there's a moratorium that currently exists with rental of the facilities by outside groups. that currently exists with rental of the facilities by outside groups. What we've done with this policy is we've created a limited public forum, and we've, so that folks can come in, and as Bob Sullivan aptly said, you cannot regulate content when you create a public forum. Anybody can come and speak. We've designated a particular classroom by policy on the first floor at the high school as the particular place for people fewer than 25. And then we've identified the auditorium at the high school for larger groups, groups beyond 25, having the opportunity to do that one time per year. So that's the way we've attempted to manage that. Otherwise, the facilities manager would secure the buildings as he currently does. Russ Wilson, our athletic director, would, you know, secure fields and gymnasiums, because that's not content speech, that's not expressive speech under the policy. So that's what, Kathleen, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add about that?
No, you're gonna put me out of a job. I shouldn't say that in this budget season. But, you know, we did spend a great deal of time with you, as Ed said, about six weeks ago. And as Attorney Sullivan said at that time, you really need to now take this draft, if you pass first reading, and reflect on it, and get input, and make any changes you wanted second reading. It is a big policy with a lot of tentacles attached to it, anything that invokes First Amendment and freedom of expression. We need to proceed carefully and thoughtfully. So I would urge you to take Attorney Sullivan's advice. Think about this. If you have questions, direct them back to our office through Ed, and we'll get you whatever information you need prior to second reading.
Carol?
I have a question, maybe more for you, Ed.
Okay.
It's just, so have, do I read this to say that essentially we're deciding that it's only the high school that can be rented out?
That's-
The middle school, if we approve this, nobody can rent the middle school, or a room in the middle school?
For this purpose.
For any kind of expressive, I think pretty much almost everything is expressive.
I think that's essentially true, is it not, Kathleen?
Yes.
Sorry.
However, the policy does take into account that youth-related groups, you know, by definition, so it's not all use, but it's outside rentals, how we traditionally thought about them.
Now, I'm sorry, with the community organizations, would we be able to rent out the middle school to a community organization, a local community organization?
Not necessarily.
Youth-related organizations, school-sponsored groups would be able to use them?
Would not be.
Would be.
Would be able. Okay. All right. Because my, just, my only concern was just, you know, we're spending all this money on this big, beautiful middle school, and one of the reasons for the middle school being downtown was that community organizations could use it. It wasn't just gonna be for school purposes and nothing else. So that was my only concern, because I just don't think we should do anything to, you know, limit that. I think that's a good thing for, you know, the taxpayers to get something out of this building.
So the answer to your question is, local organizations will be able to use the middle school as well?
Yeah, and I think that's okay.
Okay.
Can I have a clarification on that? Because that's not how, I read it, you could not have the Association of Portsmouth taxpayers renting like they do currently their Sherbin School. They would have, is that, because that's how-
They would-
Because they're an expressive type of group.
And a non-school-sponsored group and a non-youth-related group, as defined in the policy, they would have to use the room at the high school.
Right. So, I mean, I'm just giving that example. The Association of Portsmouth taxpayers could only use the high school that room because of-
The difference being, if, the policy starts with the proposition that the school facilities aren't there to create a public forum for expressive content.
And they're expressive?
Yes. So, and they aren't by definition, you know, school use, which obviously gets priority, school-sponsored or youth activities for kids under the age of 21. The farther you go down that road, and this is, you know, what we talked about at the prior meeting, once you allow it, you cannot regulate content. So you have to, if the Ku Klux Klan wants to come in, you gotta let them in, once you've created that forum. And, or groups that you may not agree with, you know, politicians you may not agree with. If you create that forum, so that's why the recommendation was to create a limited public forum for use of 25 people and under, and the once-a-year use of the auditorium.
I'll just follow, and I will, and I'm the one who's been trying to push it. I really believe in a public forum, because I do believe the Association Taxpayer, Portsmouth Taxpayers, I believe all groups shouldn't be notified. This is a drastic change, and I guess we need, you know, to go with this, an explanation of cause of this, because we have been. We have not had a high amount of what I would consider radical organizations that have come in to utilize it. I know that we've had bizarre ones, and we have had some radical ones. But I almost feel that all the good organizations that are out there, whether I believe in them or I don't believe in them, are now being cast aside for that public forum that we were so open for since the beginning of Portsmouth School Systems. Or the buildings, I should say. I want to make sure it's not the school systems.
Two issues, and not to pick on you, Kent, but if you use the word radical, that means something different to you than it means to Leslie, or that it means to Carol, or Tom.
But just to counter on that, I mean, whether it's radical or whatever it is, that we've never had an issue that's really-
Well, we've had issues that haven't necessarily, well, we have had issues, and some of which have been resolved before they became big issues, and, you know, decisions have been made to utilize school buildings in the past, which created that public forum, which we're now trying to take a look at. And the second point is, there are other avenues available within the city that are public forums. There's the part by the parking lot at Prescott Park, bless you, the Levinson Room at the library. So it's not that the school is the only place that would provide a public forum. I'm not telling you what your deliberation should be, or, I just want you to know what the implications are. And that's why we said to you, you need to take this policy now and really reflect on what you want your overall policy to be, with knowledge of what the effects of any decision that you make. And that, and that's clearly your decision, but you need to know what the implications are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You know, with constraints comes enforcement, and with this fall under, you know, Mr. Bartlet's, you know, would you be handling sort of the enforcement of, you know, we have, you know, a local community organization, 75 percent, you know, we're trying to sit there and, you know, evaluate to make sure that they pass the muster? I mean, that falls under our, the administration's purview to evaluate any application for facility use.
Historically, that's been the case, and, you know, it's been set up, there are clear-cut cases that each building they handle, but if there's exceptions, usually it's my phone that rings. Sometimes I go down the hall.
And then my phone rings. That piece hasn't changed administratively. It goes through the business office.
Okay, so Rebecca, just one sec. So I guess I would like a little clarification. Where is the line between what is a local community organization, 75 percent need to be residents of Portsmouth, versus a group that might be considered to be trying to have expressive speech? So the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers is a group of expressive speech because they're of a political nature in the way they go about their message? Or are they a local organization, community organization, because 75 percent or more are made up of Portsmouth residents? I'm a little confused about that.
That one may meet that definition.
So what's a clear-
Like the, what's the group that sponsors the candidates' night?
You mean Portsmouth Listens?
No.
Oh, the League of Women-
No, it's the League of Women Voters.
Oh, the League, oh, the-
Which is now- So they're all gonna have to be looked at.
Okay. And who, and who makes that decision as to which organization is local versus expressive?
Some collaboration of the administration and our office.
Okay. Is the, could you just, in a, briefly remind us, you know, what's a rough definition of expressive content?
If you're looking at what people are saying versus the performance of what they're doing.
I see.
So that, and, you know, in the examples you, you know, we give, if the man-boy-love-society, you know, you might not agree with their message, the stuff they're talking about, that's definitely expressive content. You know, so if you look at the message somebody's giving, or what they're talking about, that's where you create your forums, if you're not too careful. And once you let one in, you can't look at the content of another. That's the balancing act you have to do.
But that group could come in once a year, is what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
In a certain space, limited?
Under 25 people are once a year at the auditorium.
And so, so what is Room 115A?
It's a classroom.
It's a great room.
Does it exist?
Yes, it does.
We actually consulted with the, with the high school principal as to what would be the best, it's the glassed-in room adjacent to the lib, in the back end of the library where-
Oh, okay. Okay. And, and then the other is-
It's a nice room.
It's a magic room.
So then the other is for more than 25 people, so you'd have like 26 people in a 900-seat auditorium, possibly?
Well, we've had requests, you know, and I put 300 people in spaces.
No, I understand.
So, yes.
Right. And my last question, then I'll go Rebecca, you had your hand up, is, and I think maybe the board might want to consider, because even though certain things would allow a group to come in on a one-time basis, I'm wondering if we could insert something that actually might not allow any group that engages in hate speech to be allowed to have any limited, any kind of speech.
Then you're squarely, you know, the Supreme Court recently, you know, within the week, decided that protesters can go to funerals and yell very hateful things. They have a First Amendment right to do that. So you would definitely get a challenge if we tried to insert language like that.
So you couldn't put any, so KKK and neo-Nazi organizations, they would have the right?
Yeah. That's the example I always use. You know, you can-
Send them to the library.
But Kathleen, I always-
We don't want glass walls, do we?
I get stuck on this.
Just bringing it up. Rebecca, you had a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just wonder if you could clarify, like, last fall, the Wizards basketball team came. Did they rent the high school?
I'm totally unaware of that event, so I didn't even speak to Rebecca.
I just wonder, is that a rentable-
They were invited.
Fundraiser for the school.
Wizard?
They were invited by the high school.
So they were, they were invited, okay. So they didn't rent it. And then there's a craft fair that happens at the high school?
That's a fundraiser for New Franklin.
That's a fundraiser, but is that a rentable space? Because I know one year it wasn't allowed at the high school. It moved to the Frank Jones Center.
They chose to.
I think they make a donation as-
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out what's, what, and then when President Obama came-
Well, that's the president.
How's, well, that's the president.
The committee talked about that, Rebecca.
And I know that we're not gonna make him rent it, you know, but we allowed him the use of the school.
But only once.
But I wonder-
They still owe us money for the security, so.
I just wonder where that falls in. And I guess it all comes back to, we have, the high school has this wonderful auditorium, and every year we're faced with these budget decisions. And I look at it as a moneymaker that we don't use. You know, we could have musical groups come in and rent it out. I mean, people come here all the time. There's the music hall, there's all these theaters downtown, and I just really worry about having a policy that won't allow for future use of something like that, because we're afraid of the content. And I guess I look at, when I read that decision about the Westboro Baptist Church being allowed to protest at these funerals, I think what they do is awful, but it is their right. And I'm very nervous about curtailing anybody's right to say things. And I just want to make sure that we're not creating a policy that's exclusive and that could damage us further down the road, when we have an opportunity to say why we don't like what the Westboro Baptist Church stands for, and engage in a civil dialogue. And we're not afraid of you. And so I just really, I'm nervous about really sort of confining ourselves and not allowing, you know, groups to come in. I-
Well, just one thing.
There was a lot.
You have a right to speak, but you don't have a right to use a public building to speak, unless the policymakers decide that that's acceptable. And so this is why I keep coming back to, this policy does take a lot of conversation between you and a lot of thought, which is why we wanted to get it on now for first reading, so that over the next couple of months, you can engage in that dialogue and think, come collectively to some decision of what you want to do about the building use.
And so if a musical group or, you know, a theater group wanted to rent, a traveling, wanted to rent, we wouldn't be allowed to do that? Because we've already used our once-a-year? Or is it that?
No, it's one per group.
It's that individual?
Yeah, per applicant.
So then they couldn't come, they couldn't rent it twice a year and do a spring and a fall play, for example?
No, not under how it is now. I think we talked about that. If it included a rehearsal, if it was an event that was a two-night, that would be considered-
One.
Once, but if you're having two performances.
Kent?
The bringing up of the man-love-boy, anything in the, in the public domain, though, cannot break the law. Is that not a correct statement? So, I mean, they cannot, you know, talk about seducing underage children and so forth. I mean, there are laws that protect us from the harm. The KK cannot burn a cross as they have their meeting on inside or whatever. I mean, there are those things that, and again, these are organizations I would hope everyone despises and wishes they would go away. But how is it that we have become a society that continuously says, because the fear of, and we've never had anything so restrictive allowing the public speech? I feel that the next damn thing that we'll be talking about is, and I hope it never happens, because it's the best part of graduation, and I encourage it, is that baccalaureate would become an endangered topic. We, I just feel that we're stepping this line with this policy, and I really hope that the public gets out. I hope the Portsmouth Herald encourages when the date is set, that people come and express their opinions. Because I'm not sure, I may be in the minority, but my feeling really is, is that there are so many good things that we've done by renting the schools, with things I don't agree with, okay? They've been outstanding accomplishments by doing that. The minute we put a line in the sand, my fear is, you start to turn away. And aren't schools where we want to create independent thinking and allow it to happen? And now what we're saying, I think, is, well, with caution, you know? And we should be fearful. We have to be. But I don't think this is where you do it. The minute you start to lessen the chance, and I agree with you, Kathleen, there are other avenues of where they can have freedom of speech, but what we're doing here is saying, not here, though. And that's, that's my fear on it. And until I hear from the public, I won't vote on it.
Thank you. What we're saying is, limited.
But who's to limit?
Well, we're gonna have-
Saying it's-
I hate that, I'm not gonna say it. We're gonna have the policing squad of who says that. And I guarantee, you think your phone rang before? The minute you say that the New England Ballet, or the New Hampshire Ballet, has a political motive on it, and or somebody has it, you're gonna get more calls.
Yes, Tom.
I think, this is, obviously needs more discussion, but I think the, the concept here is that all we're trying to do is put a safety valve in place. And now, the fact that someone says, oh, you're putting a safety valve in place, it's now gonna be a way for us to discriminate. But I think the fact is, is it becomes a tool that is enabled to be used, you know, if there needs to be a tool to be used. You know, so I don't think it necessarily opens us up to a whole host of criticism, you know, by having that in place. But I think the fact is, is if you just leave it wide open, is that really, you know, the method that we want to have? Or do you actually create some level of constraint that says, you know, we want to be able to evaluate and take a look at who's gonna be using our facility, and make sure that, you know, we have that appropriate use, you know, that control? I don't know. I mean, that's, that's partly what I read here, is that it's, in a sense, you know, a safety valve.
That's what we did. Carol?
I understand what you're saying, Tom, but it isn't a tool that we can use if we want to use it. If we do this, this is it. The limited, open, public forum is, you know, less than 25 people, blah, blah, blah. That's it. It has nothing to do with what is being spoken, the type of group. It just, either it fits this-
Right.
-or it doesn't. It's not a tool that you get to use. So I just want to make sure, I just want to be clear on that, because it isn't optional.
Yeah, so I'm not saying it's something we turn on or off. It becomes, if we suddenly get a group that doesn't fit this criteria, they don't get to use it.
That's right. And if we really want them to, they don't.
So if the safety valve is designed appropriately, you know, it'll weed out the people or groups that we don't. And maybe it doesn't. But I think, you know, there's, we have history to look back on, to say, you know, these are the groups that have rented the place. These are the types of people that, and groups that we do want to rent the place to. And then it is, you know, I mean, is that not the case? I mean, we don't have history that can determine that if this policy is put in place, we're gonna suddenly weed these groups out automatically? Or these groups are gonna fit into this policy?
I don't know. Have we checked that out, to see exactly who's come in?
Well, I just wrote myself, to get you the rental information, maybe Steve and I can work on that.
Yeah.
So you know what the rental dollars have been over time, and what kinds of groups have used it.
I mean, I think it would be a shame if we suddenly have a policy that suddenly weeds out some of our past clients that we've earned good money from.
It will, it won't. No, it won't, because they're already in. All the people that have already come in to use our facilities-
No, it's starting over.
No, they will be out.
They, you know, the people who are already in, we can't keep them out now by virtue of this new policy.
We need a clarification, because we have a moratorium.
I think that'd come up, Carol, with people who are already scheduled-
Yeah.
-before the moratorium was put in place. I think that's what you're thinking about.
Already scheduled, people who are already regularly scheduled.
Right now, but once the policy, whatever the policy is, and that'll apply to everybody prospectively.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Until we change it the next time. Right?
We would apply whatever criteria.
Right. So after a year or so, there's nothing to say that a future school board can't revisit this policy and change it?
What you couldn't do is undo the public forum easily.
You mean if we open it up and it becomes a public forum, and we can't undo it easily?
Once you create your limited public forum, then the public has, you know, an expectation and a right to that. You can make it broader-
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're talking- Yeah, I was gonna say, you're talking about making it stricter versus, you know, broader is much easier to do.
So you mean not ever?
Well.
Tough.
That's what we're going, that's the process we're going through right now.
That's what we're going through now, that's why there's a moratorium, the policy hadn't been looked at in 15 years plus.
Okay.
So we had legal rationale to put the brakes on it and say.
I see.
You know, we didn't forever and ever create the forums that we have right now, so.
But we couldn't necessarily a year from now say, we want to do this again.
We don't like it.
We don't like it.
Okay.
Unless we were broadening it, we can't.
Okay.
I mean, I go to the extreme that, you know, and I said this, and I've talked to a number of people else, say, I talked to Dr. Arthur Hilson and tried to get a feeling of his beliefs and so forth, and I appreciate the man's knowledge and others. But you realistically could not rent to Martin Luther King down to Little Harbor, even though that would be the preferred spot for whatever. We've had, you know, you go into the presidential races, and our buildings are constantly barraged on it. Now, what happens unfortunately sometimes when candidates of the wacko party, it's unfortunate that the building's already been rented at that time that they, they wanted to use it. I mean, we've, we have been able to control this. So, again, I come back to, you know, the belief on this that we're punishing the good along with the bad, and I just, I just don't have a good feeling on it at this point. And again, I'll listen to the public, but I would be ashamed that if a future, you know, Martin Luther King, you know, any candidate that was great out there that might want to come and speak, we've now sort of put parameters on it in the buildings, because people do like to use Little Harbor.
But they can come once.
Not to Little Harbor.
But under this policy.
But if they wanted to go to Little Harbor for whatever reason, I don't know why, I pick on Little Harbor, they're the one that seems to be the next in line.
They could just come to the high school.
Might be the backdrop.
But Martin Luther King could come to the high school once, yes, once a year, yep.
Right.
So we're not saying they can't come.
I know.
This, this is just treading too heavily on the First Amendment, and I just, I'm.
In your opinion?
In my opinion, which I have the right to have because of this country. And I think that's kind of, we're sort of losing the point that, you know, if the KKK comes in, they have that right. It's unfortunate, but they have that right. And then we, as a greater society, can say, you know, we're, we're not afraid of you, you are, we're extending the same rights to you, your First Amendment rights, we're extending it to you, and, but we don't agree with you, and this is why. And we can then go back to our students in the community and our children and say, you know, racism is an awful, horrible thing, and we can have a discussion. I, I just think that the, the fear of hearing something offensive is, is starting to get too controlling. And so I, this policy, it makes me very uncomfortable.
I just would comment that this is consistent with the Supreme Court's interpretation of the First Amendment. So it's not that we would be creating some new standard.
But we wouldn't be allowing people to come in anymore. And, and I, and I know that, you know, there are public forums, I know Prescott Park has a public forum, the, the library, but we also need to look at this from a financial aspect. If we want to rent this out, if we want to continue, you know, to generate some sort of income.
Well, that's why we'll get you, just because I don't know what the numbers are, it could be, you know, 10,000, or it could be half a mil, you know, we should get those numbers for you.
Right.
Okay.
And every four years, we have all these candidates come in and just.
This is first reading.
This is first reading.
So don't we need to vote?
Yes, we do.
Right. So, one last thought.
Okay, one last thought.
If I may, if you'll indulge me. The, you know, the fact that, you were talking about, you know, potentially hateful speech, but if we have a local organization that happens to be preaching hateful things, you know, that sort of qualifies for an organization that could be using it because they meet some of the criteria. Is that not correct?
They meet the criteria.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're really, I mean, so from a stand.
Local community organization.
Standpoint of, of trying to sit there and make sure that the, the facilities are available to our community for our community's use versus for organizations that are outside of the community. I mean, that's really, you know, that's the, that part that, you know, gives us some enforcement, correct?
That's true.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, so just as a closing question, so the impetus for this policy, so this has to do with, to some extent, renting out public school facilities for, for example, church organizations to use regularly as part of their, where they have their services.
We have had, continuously have had those requests over the last couple of years, in, from having a helicopter land on the field at the high school to request to use the high school auditorium every single week.
And the middle school in the past as well?
Well, no, the high, well, there's been use at the middle school in the past and a request to use the high school on an ongoing basis once a week. So that prompted a discussion about the age of the policy we had, and, and clearly a dialogue needed to happen.
So, this is just the first reading. So indulge me for a second. First, would people want to do a roll call or just a voice vote on this?
Roll call.
Since it is policy, but, okay. So, first reading.
Carol Chellman.
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson.
No.
Kent LaPage.
No.
Ann Walker.
Yes.
Mitch Schulman.
Yes.
Tom Martin.
Yes.
Leslie Stevens.
Yes.
Clay Hayward.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen.
Am I needed for anything else this evening?
Thank you, Kathleen.
So just quickly, if, any policy committees, we will, I mean, committee reports policies first, but this was policy, so I imagine you don't have much to say, or you do?
Well, the only other thing that we've been talking about is the bullying policy.
Right.
And there was some question about the language in there, and I think Kathleen's note, notes on our meeting addressed it, but at this point, it looks like the legislature's looking at some of the language.
Right.
So we're not going to try to change our policy until we hear back from what the legislature is deciding to do.
Okay.
So that's just an update.
Rebecca?
Does this school board want to contact the state legislature about the policy change? I mean, I, I was, I was away and I, and I just read about it online that they're, you know, they want to sort of totally.
Take out the language.
Get rid of this, and, and I find that bothersome. I didn't know if we were coming out and saying.
We did. So we, what the policy committee had put together for questions, we actually forwarded on to Dr. Smith, I guess on Tuesday over the school vacation, there was a public hearing on the, on the bullying, you know, the proposed changes in the bullying law.
Yeah.
And so we forwarded the comments Kathleen had directed directly to him.
Saying that we strongly believe in this legislation?
Yeah, yes, but asking for a couple of tweaks around the confidentiality, the FERPA concern, and the, where the disposition of the reports go.
Okay.
Particularly, we were interested in those two items as well. But we were supporting the policy in.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can I just ask a question about the?
Yes.
Oh, Kathleen, I'm sorry, right before you leave, just before you go, the, so what are we doing right now with, where if you have a bullying and you have records that are created, and then you have the FERPA issues, and you have a parent requesting, and, you know, what, what is happening, what's gonna happen?
Well, we've always done, and we haven't changed that, we give summary reports. The FERPA requirements protect student educational records from disclosure to non-students, their parents, or an adult student, somebody who's over 18. One of the comments we forwarded to the legislature was, it mandated notice to both sets of parents, mandated reports be generated, and it didn't do anything to reconcile FERPA with the new bullying policy. FERPA's a federal statute. So we've always kind of had that in mind anyway with Title IX or any other kind of investigative report we've done the past. We generate a summary report with the conclusions and the facts that support the report, and we do not disclose the full report. Because particularly in the bullying context, you can't redact names that the students aren't personally identifiable by even reading it in a redacted form.
Because I had a family contact me that said that their daughter was found to be a bully, and in that process, various children were interviewed, and they asked to have copy of the records of what the other children were saying that she did to be a bully. And they were told that they couldn't have those records because of FERPA. Is that really the way it's happening?
That's correct, because you, you can't, and that's one of the things we want the legislature to give us some better guidance on. You can't disclose the educational record of those other students to a third party. And, and disclosure can, even if you black out the names, disclosure, legal disclosure can be when the personally identifiable information.
Right.
It's you. You know, your name's not there, but we know it's you. So that's why we do a summary report.
Right, but you can give them a summary of what it was, but not the actual reports, but some sort of summary. They can get some information as to what allegations are.
Yes, we do give the summary report.
Okay, there is.
What the conclusion is, what the recommendation is, and the facts upon which that was based.
Okay.
And we do sit down with the parents. And as Ed said, there's also an issue, what do you do with the reports that are generated? Do they become educational? All of that, the legislature didn't address.
Right, right.
So it's kind of the brave new world here as we try to wind our way through it.
And then just real quick on the gender identity issue, now, is that something that you guys are communicating to the legislature about as well?
No, I think the legislature was looking at that among.
They're gonna look at it, okay.
So we were gonna wait till they finished looking at it to know whether or not, to come back to this board to see if you wanted to weigh in on the language as it was changed.
In, in the sense that they're looking at it, I think it indicates here that they're looking at it to maybe change so that there wouldn't be any categories of race, sex, and other things.
That was my understanding.
What is their reasoning for taking that out? Why would they want to take that out? Okay.
It wasn't my suggestion, so I don't know what the reasoning was.
I understand.
But I would think that they.
I just was curious.
My guess would be that by putting the laundry list in, if you left something out, that maybe the thinking was if it was broader, then you didn't, somebody couldn't point to and say, well, it wasn't one of the seven that you named, so tough luck. So, that would be my guess, that they wanted it broader so it could be interpreted more broadly.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But that's just conjecture on my part.
Mm-hmm. I guess I just wonder a little bit if, you know, what would be the harm in putting that in now?
Well, if we put it in and then it changes to something else where the, it's just an odd circumstance that right now they're looking at it.
Yep.
So, just the timing, we just decided to hold off until they.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you. Night.
Good night.
Facilities, anything on facilities?
Sure, some highlights of our last meeting. We have actually secured the Energy Star plaque, that we will be looking for an appropriate place to mount in the high school. I think we're talking about putting it into one of the, by the trophy case or maybe in, in that area. But there's, work continues on looking at other ways that we can bring some of the other schools up and bringing more efficiency to the schools. We have continued to advance the green cleaning products and the whole sort of healthy school initiative. All the schools are using microfiber cleaning products, as well as all the elementary schools are 100% using the green products. And I've forgotten the supplier, but that is slowly propagating. We found that we still have more supply than we had originally anticipated. So we had thought that the middle and high schools would be going to green products this January, February, but it looks like it'll probably cut over sometime towards the end of the year. We're going to be taking a look at the bleacher project for this coming year, where we had talked about putting new bleachers at the, the new football and athletic field. What we're looking to do is reconfigure the home side of the bleachers, because one of the things that we started to take a look at was making sure that we could accommodate the appropriate number of people who wanted to watch, plus an ample amount of room for the high school band, so that they could actually play during home events. And knowing full well that the way the bleachers were originally configured, it was going to be an equal 50/50, the same size for both the visitor and the home. So what we're going to do is just do a little slight asymmetrical configuration. The biggest news on the facilities, we had our kickoff with Doran Woodier. They are the architectural firm that was hired to do the facility assessment for the elementary schools. They met with all of the powers that be, that being principals, some selected teachers, obviously the administration, the Kenny Lynch's team in maintenance and building maintenance. And they are going to start the work for the assessment to actually start collecting the data. They're anticipating that, you know, the raw data of just getting the facility assessment done will happen rather quickly. The part where they're going to do the interviewing and talking to teachers so that not only do we know what shape the buildings are in, but they'll be able to assess what the needs are of the community. So from the standpoint of, are the classrooms big enough? Do we have the appropriate facilities to teach art the way we want to teach art, the way we want to teach math and things like that? So everything from, you know, ambient temperatures to how room flows, they're going to be able to do that kind of assessment through the discussion with a lot of the people that are using the facilities. So we're anticipating a response. Mr. Bartlett, is it May timeframe?
End of May.
End of May, okay. All right, so that'll be a, we'll be very much interested in taking a look at that. I think, would that be June timeframe that we would have that presented to the board?
I believe so. I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to see it and see how much internal digesting we need to do.
Right, yeah, sure, okay. So that's, that's it for the facilities. Knowing that the technology is, right after that, I would ask to postpone that to the next meeting.
Okay.
Because there is a lot to talk about, but there's some, some key pieces that I don't have all the accurate information on.
Okay. Yes, Carol?
Tom, just, so, so we have selected the firm that's going to do the assessment of the facilities?
Yes, we have.
A particular firm, what was that name?
Dor and Woodier.
Dor and.
Witier.
Witier.
So they're a New England-based firm.
Okay.
And they have two locations, one down in Newburyport and one up in Burlington, Vermont.
Uh-huh.
And just to give you an overview, I mean, we took a look at a number of different firms, we interviewed them all, and we can present some of the findings that we had, but, and I think that's what Mr. McDonough had done in our previous meeting, was just give a quick overview of, you know, how we went through the selection process and that, you know, they came out on top. One of the things that we had was $50,000 to allocate towards this assessment, and they met that criteria from a financial standpoint, plus all of the other criteria that we had sort of set through.
Well, I like that they are from Burlington and Newburyport, that's a good sign.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, from a sort of conversational standpoint, one of the things that they have done in the past that was attractive about them was the fact that they had done a lot of community engagement models and had really been able to go out, a lot of experience in doing things with the community to understand not just the educational community, but the broader community, to understand, you know, how things work, how public forums go, things like that.
Thank you, Tom.
Steve?
And just as an update, last week, vacation week, we had three full onsite days of investigation from that team.
Thank you.
Good time to do it.
Okay, and the last is the JBC, if there's much to report.
Tomorrow night's meeting.
I don't hear any.
Wasn't there?
Steve, yes?
We have, we have a regularly scheduled meeting tomorrow evening. We also have a, scheduled on March 23 at the Levinson Room in the library. We're going to have a public presentation about the construction management plan focusing on Phase One. So that's coming up. We have the, all the bids are out on the street, and the results are starting to come back. The Gilbane management team has been spending many hours scoping out the bid results, and I expect that we will be starting to have those results presented to us at, at a future meeting in April, so.
Okay. Anything else to add? All right. Our next meeting is March 22, I think?
Yes.
And that's going to be at Dondaro.
Yes.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.